Roll call, please. Almost forgot.
Councilmember Elfs?
Here.
Councilmember Huffdie? Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Here.
Mayor Warnekov?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we do not have any presentations or proclamations tonight, so we will move on to the third agenda item, which is the town manager report. Sharif.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. I do have a short report for today. We're diligently putting together our budget for next year. As you know, we're getting ready to present on June 12th our preliminary budget. I am working with George Savage and the Finance Committee to hopefully have a meeting before that, if possible, to give a sneak peek to the Finance Committee, and they have their work groups that are broken out into groups to help us as we will prepare the September revise, if you will. And so that's in the works. We have a lot of staffing changes that continue to happen in Town Hall. We have our new engineering coordinator start today, engineering technician. His name is Brendan. You all get a chance to meet him. Terrence has been working very strong in our planning and building department, being our point of contact, and just been wowed by his experience and leadership in helping Adrian and helping the rest of the team as we move forward there. I do have important news to announce regarding Howard, our Public Works Director. After 22 years of service, Howard will be leaving the town to pursue other opportunities, and we will have some time to celebrate Howard in the next month. He'll be with us through the month of June to help us provide a smooth transition. But we want to take a timeout and celebrate Howard. So more news to come in regards to a party for him, where we invite the members of the public to be part of that celebration. And then I'll also be asking Council for our proclamation, one of the meetings in June, to recognize Howard for his years of service.
That is indeed big news. Thank you for sharing that, and I certainly look forward to celebrating with the rest of the town and the staff when that gets scheduled. Are there any questions at this time on the town manager report? No. Looking around, I'm seeing nothing.
Thank you.
Or comment, any question or comment?
I think Howard has a vast historic set of knowledge, and any way we can possibly make that available to us going forward would be very useful. He knows most things, and if he doesn't know them, he can find them out, and making him, making that available for the next person and even for residents, who try to figure out what to do with their trail or their easement, or their, who's interfering with what. If there's any way we can do that, it would be helpful.
duly noted, for sure.
Thank you, Mary. I would sing no more comments. I will close this item and move on to oral communications. This is for any item not on the agenda. And I, let's see, I do see one hand raised on Zoom. I see no hands in the schoolhouse, so we'll go right to Zoom. Rita Comas.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I won't mention anything right now about the contract that will be coming up later on the agenda, but I would like to ask, you know, as the public are talking about the different contracts that we know of, I asked last time for the contracts for the new people that are in housing in the planning office. There's two people, Mr. Biggs is back, but it's not noted if his contract is the same as it was, or it's been restated or updated, and the new gentleman after the person that we hired is no longer with us. And so that transparency is important to all of us. And with Howard leaving, I guess the Westridge project, repaving project that looks absolutely beautiful, just wore him out. Such a great job. But I think in looking at who we need to have a contract with, having some type of contract with Howard as a consultant for the future, hopefully that's going to be negotiated soon, and we get to see that contract. But for the transparency and for our budget, we need to know what we're spending. You know, lots of comments about the contract that is available for everyone to see, but I'm sure the public would like to see the contracts that we're spending money every day on the extra people that are in planning, and we don't know how much money that is. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Rita. I don't see, let me confirm. Yeah, no other hands raised on Zoom, so I will close oral communications. There was one item, and I hope it's okay if I bring it up right now. I wanted to ask the council about a potential change in the order of the agenda items. Is that okay? If I, I think I should have done that at the outset, but.
I think that's fine to raise now.
Okay. One thing I wanted to ask the council if they would be open to is swapping the order of Item Six and Item Seven, and looking at this Item Seven as a continuation of the discussion that we were having last week on the zoning. And I just thought that there could be a longer discussion as for the new item, which is the update from the subcommittee. And so I was curious if there was openness to swapping that order. I'm seeing one.
I would be open to that. It's okay with me.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, it's fine. The reason it's there is because it had previously been on the consent agenda, and so would normally fall in order as it is. I don't, I don't have a strong feeling. That's fine.
Okay. Sorry, I just didn't catch it when we were going, think through that when we were going through the roll forward. Okay, so just for people in the, that are joining on Zoom, noting that we will be swapping the order of Item Six and Item Seven. And so we will first go on to Item Number Five, which is the consent agenda. And I am wondering if anybody would like to pull Item Number Five A on the consent agenda. Mary, thank you. All right. We don't have any other items on the consent agenda to approve, so why don't we just write, correct?
Do you want to take public comment first?
Oh, thank you. Public comment on the, Mary doesn't give her feedback first, and then we take public comment. Am I getting confused?
Do that.
It could go either way, but I think given that, yeah, the public may not know about this item, maybe it would be appropriate for, and we don't have a staff presentation as far as I know, so perhaps Councilor Huffdie.
Yeah, that'd be great.
This is a recommendation from me, and I will say that it has been through several iterations of, you see an actual, in front of you, an earlier one I've done since this one, for whatever reason. But it came to my attention, I think while, when I was campaigning, that Gary Nielsen was our police commissioner, and had been doing so for 10 years, and had been very active, particularly in the beginning years when he started, and had been asking to have. So that is, so it's an obligation for me, to Gary, but also in looking more deeply, I think it's one of those things that didn't quite make it into the computer age. It's not on the website. It's not, it's not recognized in documents that I've been able to find. And it's been present in the town for 30 years. It started with Bob Anderson, who was extremely well-connected with the Sheriff's Department, worked very hard. He did all the reporting of all the accidents. He did, he presented to the bicycle and safety. When it became active, he became the liaison. He worked hard at those things. Ed Davis did it very actively as well, and it, and then Gary's been active as well. And we have the honor of having Gary in the audience right now, so we can hear more about what it's been like over the years and how it's changed. When I started getting together the job description, because without a job description, you had any record of the losing. I discovered this more, slightly more challenging than I had anticipated, because I thought I could just look up the losing list, and that would be it. But no. So this is having to make everybody understand. My initial outreach was to Captain Fox, who said, "That's a win-win. We've got to do it. Everybody will benefit. The police department, the sheriff's office will benefit, and the town will benefit." I then went back through the history with anybody who was going to talk to me about their interactions with the, with the police commissioner, and everything had been extremely helpful for residents in terms of if you have a real problem, and you had somebody who was just a resident, you could go to and talk to, who could ambush you through the process of reporting to the sheriff, or not reporting, or whatever it happened to be that worked out. And so, and apparently, in the earlier days, within the last 20 years, they did the sheriff's contract, for instance. They were the liaison that set it up. So we've lost all that goodwill that was direct to the opening, and I think we can get this back.
Councilmember Huffdie, if you don't mind moving the microphone closer, just so I can pick it up on the camera.
Will do.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, so you can see the general decision serve as a liaison for the town to the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department for general safety of the town's residents, in particular for vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian safety. You know, that has been targeted, because we had our monitor, and we moved that thing around, and they did all that work. But it doesn't need to be the only thing, and they do attend the, I think this will surely relieve the work of the Sheriff's Department, because the police commissioner attends both the emergency preparedness and the bicycle, pedestrian, and traffic committees. So, and can report on issues within the Sheriff's Department. Anyway, I am hoping, I, because Gary, as you know, he was the mayor for many years. He's done almost everything in this town that can be done, including rewriting the general plan. And he's been quite thorough. He did, he presented this, what you see before you, job description, and he went ahead and found somebody who's extremely well-qualified to do it. So, who is Kevin Welsh, who many of you know, almost all of us should know. He has a PhD in safety education. He's, he does, he's the director of safety education for San Mateo Union High School. He, he is, he has been doing the job essentially for the last four or five years, but I believe that we should, we should expand and define this, this role, and bring it into the 21st century, and have it on the website, and have a regular PR campaign that explains the why and wherefore of that position, so we can get the best use out of it. And so I'm grateful, I'd actually like to introduce Gary, because I think everybody knows, but I'm hoping he will say a little bit about being, his role, and maybe Kevin, who's here as well. I could have done more with your introduction, but you may have to do it yourself. So, Gary, would you take the podium?
Yeah, I think we're good. With that introduction, I don't think you need either of us here. I think it's pretty well, pretty well done at all. But first of all, it's really good that you continue on with this position. It's, there's no real reason to burden staff for something that a volunteer can do. So I'm glad you're keeping it, and I liked the, your name, or Mary's name so far, Safety Commissioner. I thought, I thought that's a good one. I guess the rest of you may not have weighed in on that one yet. Oh, yeah, so you, so we were talking about, you were talking about the job duties.
Yes.
I forgot one.
Great.
Yeah, it's an important one, so here it is. This position should monitor town events such as foot races, bicycle races that come through town, events like zots to tots, and maybe the town picking, major events. They make great use of our roads and trails and that sort of thing. And actually, I've been doing that, and I think my predecessors did that as well. So your introduction has come, and I think you got most of what we need to hear. It's a perfect replacement. I'll tell you one thing. For about three years, the previous town sergeant thought that the old white band used to haul the trailer around town was too unsafe for his deputies to drive around. So Kevin, Kevin has a pickup and a hitch, and so for three years, we took it everywhere, employed it, and brought it back. So thank you. If I didn't thank you before, I'm sure I'd, yeah, great job. And who knows, you may have to do it again.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you wanted me to say something about my experience, something that might be useful for Kevin. Well, this is one that Ed Davis, my predecessor, told me that on occasion, he'd get a phone call from somebody in town who wanted to weasel out of a traffic ticket. And the minute I heard that, I decided I'd try to keep it a lower profile as I can. And I think now, if you're going to get it up on the website, so you're going to ruin the situation. So Kevin may hear from some, some of our people. He actually agreed.
No brutes.
And fixed, fixed one ticket up, but. I don't think I have anything else I was going to say, other than it's really been my pleasure to do this duty over these years, and it's time for me to pass it on to somebody younger, and that we have that guy right here.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah. No questions? No questions, LA.
Just one quick question. If you reviewed the specific duties, does that sound right to you? Is that consistent with what you've been doing?
Yeah, I actually wrote them, and, and Mary wordsmithed them a bit, so I cleaned them up a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
What would you think about adding the stable inspector to the duties of the, of the safety inspector, the safety?
No, no, how are you on horses and?
He knows how to do it.
If, if that's a more efficient way to get that job done.
Yeah, we haven't done that. That's another, another whole category that fell by the wayside about five years ago, so.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's something that needs to be done for the safety of the community.
Yeah, I don't think it's an overwhelming job.
Yeah. Great, great.
All right with this guy. It's okay with me.
Well, I, just a big thanks.
Mary, actually, I have a, is it okay if I have a question? Yeah. So thank you so much for your many years of service, and thank you very much for your willingness to move into this role. The one question I have is with respect to Item Number Four, which is participating in contract negotiations with the Sheriff's Department. When we were working on that, you know, like two years ago, when our process started and we had a subcommittee, we didn't, I mean, even as council members, we weren't involved in negotiations with the sheriff contract, so that seems more like a staff role. So I just was curious, since I've been on council, that hasn't been happening, and so.
That's correct, Mayor, and I think you could simply change the word to advise or provide feedback regarding the contract totally fine, but the actual contract negotiation is a staff one.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. That was the only question I had.
Yeah, okay, well, I was a part of, oh, two or three of them, maybe two of, through the years, but not, not recently. However, I did have a session with Jeremy, I think, as you were in the negotiations. So I did get my two bits in there.
Yeah, no, I think it's great, and I think what I heard from Sharif is, was to continue to advise in that capacity, but in terms of like, being in the meeting when he's actually meeting with the San Mateo County Sheriff and the business team there, that that's a staff role. That's all.
Oh, yeah, sure. Absolutely that way.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. You're going to have to get a lot of oil in those joints in order to be able to do this job, by the way.
Yeah. And that's a question I have for the town council. I've enjoyed working with Gary. It's been a great, great few years, and I still am going to work with Gary, right, Gary? I need a lot more information from you. But if I can get Ed Hollands to be like my assistant, it would be great. Now, Ed's the chairman of the Bicycle, Pedestrian, Traffic Safety Committee, and I kind of had him step up to that position, because I didn't want to be chair. I've been on the Emergency Preparedness Committee, Public Works Committee, and of course, on the Bicycle, Pedestrian, Traffic Safety Committee. And I don't know if you people know, but we don't have bicycle lanes out here. A lot of people refer to them as bicycle lanes. We don't have bicycle lanes. We have shoulder lanes. And the reason for that is that we did not want all the signage that went along with the state requirements. So at that point, 2011, I believe it was, we decided not to have bicycle lanes. But thanks to Howard, we made our shoulder lanes all five feet wide, which is a great ploy for the town. We want to try to keep our town as simple as possible and not have all the signs down the road. If you drive down Alpine Road, you see about 70, 80 signs passed where our town boundaries are. Do we want that? That's a question we have to ask ourselves. So it's one thing to think about, and I enjoy working with Gary, and hopefully, I already talked to Ed, and Ed said he'd be along for the ride to help me. So if I get the approval, it'd be great.
Great.
Well, I think we're going to have a discussion.
I don't know that. Okay.
Yeah, because I think we need to have more input. But I'm super grateful for you. Are you ready to have a 24/7 telephone? Okay, good. That's all, the only requirement for this job.
All right, if we're done with questions, I'll take public comment and then bring it back. All right. Is there any public comment on this item? I don't see any hands raised in the schoolhouse. One hand raised on Zoom, Rita Comas. Rita.
I just want to say thank you to Gary for your service and for all that you do, you and your wife do in our town, and of course, Kevin and your family. We really need this, and, and you know, we have so many talented people in our wonderful town, and it's nice to see the residents having an opportunity to step up and do what they've been doing for years. So thank you both and to your families.
Thank you, Rita. No additional hands raised. I'm going to close public comment, bring it back for discussion. Does anybody want to start? Go. Nope?
Yes, Gary, thank you. You have done so much for the town over so many years and in so many roles. You deserve to kind of hand this off at this point, but it's been greatly appreciated. I generally am comfortable now. I think I heard advise in contract negotiations. Mary, you had an additional item that you wrote down that we're, I just want to be clear on the roles that we're considering.
I think, my thought is that this will take a little bit of fleshing out as we get it on the website and get it up and going. Let me see which of the.
It's the item that Gary mentioned.
Which rendition are we on?
Yeah, Gary mentioned something that.
Gary mentioned monitoring, like, races and road events in town.
Major public events or something, which to me seems, seems inappropriate.
A role, well, yeah. Yeah, there's so many people involved in that, and the fact is, Ed Hollands is doing a lot of that right now, and it would just be nice to have that, some sort of standard of why to thank, I mean, in the daytime, you know, because people are just sort of stepping up to do it.
I just have a question on procedure, because we don't have Ed on the noticed agenda. So from a procedural standpoint, if you want to comment, whether that's anything we can do tonight, or need to punt, basically.
Yeah, I would think that's.
Well, if Catherine wants to comment on it, I had, I had an idea, but I was going to suggest, I mean, I support Ed as an assistant to Kevin, and I would be happy to, I mean, there's a few little changes we've talked about tonight that I'd be happy to see on consent at our next meeting. Feel like, I mean, I feel like we have some small revisions that I think we're all comfortable with, that I would just bring back for one more time on consent in the future.
Suggest something, something similar, and perhaps, yeah, staff could work with our new commissioner to flesh out the details and bring that back for the council. Yes.
Yay.
Yes. And then the council could essentially approve the job description, or whatever we call it. And, and then that could be posted on the website, and as you say, brought into the digital age.
That sounds great to me.
Sorry, I just, my actual comment was, I think, Gary, I think we can finally close the book on your volunteer service for the town. Thank you. Yeah, that is, this is the end of an era. So thank you. And Kevin, I know you've been doing this job for a while, lots, big parts of this job, so thank you for continuing that work. And I, with the changes that we've mentioned, I support this, but I guess I support this, and I'll hear other comments.
Judith and I already went, so.
So first of all, Gary, we've worked together, and you've been great, so thank you for all your service. We really appreciate it. And Kevin, we'll look forward to you being the commissioner or something. So that's the only other thing I had on here is, I don't think we've agreed on a title, because Mary sort of switched it multiple times, and she had been suggesting, on here it's Portola Valley Commissioner, it was Police Commissioner, maybe it's Safety Commissioner. I don't have a strong feeling. I had a little hesitation about Safety Commissioner, only that we have things like fire safety and other things. So I think the name's the only thing that maybe would deserve a little bit more discussion. If we could nail that, then I agree with Jeff. I think the rest of it, we could just edit up, and it could be on consent for next time.
And I think we should have, go on.
Oh, I was guessing, do you have a proposal based on what's already on the table?
Well, I actually didn't mind Police Commissioners.
You did what?
I didn't mind Police Commissioners. I mean, it's clear, I mean, I understand that we have a sheriff, and Sheriff's Commissioner, I guess is okay, you know, Portola Valley Sheriff's Commissioner. I don't have a really strong opinion on this one way or another. I just, safety seemed to be a little bit larger than the role, because we're clearly focused on the Sheriff's Department. And then in terms of this barn inspector thing, I mean, I would suggest we have another discussion about that. Like, I don't even know what it, it rolls on, and it may be that Kevin's great for it, but maybe the next guy's not so good for it, and we're tying potentially two different roles together. So I think that barn inspector maybe needs more discussion. I'm not necessarily against it, I just would like to see more discussion. So, so I guess I would just go for Sheriff's Commissioner, but I'm, again, I don't have a strong opinion.
I'd be fine with either of those, Sheriff's Commissioner, or just keeping it as Police Commissioner.
I could go either way. Yep.
Well, yes, I agree. What, in my final decision was Sheriff's Portola Valley Safety Commissioner. Now, that maybe is not as good as even Police Commissioner, or it's not as good as, but it does point to the Sheriff's Department as, as their realm of authority. Since I began my service on this level, to the town, safety has been a big deal, and it has not, there hasn't been sort of one person who leads the charge, except for the members of the council, but who is there for the, what I discover is Public Works and Kevin and
council, but who is there for the, what I discover is Public Works and Kevin and Bob Doyle are the ones who show up when we have a flood, when we have a problem. Somebody comes and takes care of us because they're there. And there is a larger role for a Safety Commissioner. Whether this is the opportunity to set that up or not, I don't know. But it, we do have somebody who's good at it, who's about to take this role. And it's always been somebody who has a very deep understanding of the many roles of the, of the, of the town. This will be, Kevin will be the first person who hasn't been on the town council or hasn't been there to do this role. But it is a, having a Safety Commissioner was always sort of a dream of mine from the, from the other discussion. So it's sort of, has become a bit of a sticking point, but it's not completely a sticking point, as a new direction for this position.
My understanding, though, is that job description is as you've described it, which is correlating to the historical role, which was focused on Police Commissioner. And so what you were just talking about, about safety, I think it's significantly broader scope. And so number one, that wouldn't be within this agenda item. Number two, I don't know that, based on what I was hearing from the council, I don't think there was support to change the scope to make it broader in terms of safety. I think everybody was comfortable. You guys correct me if you disagree, of course, that it was around. Again, the job description as written, and the question on the table was not changing the scope, it was changing the title. And I think I heard from everybody was comfort with either Police Commissioner or Sheriff's Commissioner. And maybe, Mary, you make the final call on that because it sounds like everybody else is flexible. But if we're going to bring this back on consent, we don't want to have to discuss it again, so we should just make a decision.
Sheriff's Commissioner. Well, I think I'm gonna have to talk to the sheriff.
Okay.
I'm gonna make it the Sheriff's Commissioner. So I could do that.
It's the Sheriff's Office, which is Matthew Fox and all of the people that work within the Sheriff's Office.
Okay, I did talk to Sheriff, and she said that she'd worked with Gary and very much enjoyed having that role within our town.
Great.
So I think it's a, it's a win-win.
Okay, so I think we're agreed on the process, which is bringing it back on consent. We're agreed on the edits or like updates to the job description, and we are agreed on the title. Correct? All right. So I think with that, we don't have a vote on this item, so I will just close this item and we would move on to the next item. Is that correct, Catherine?
Just to clarify, do you want to appoint Kevin Welsh to the position this evening or wait until the job description is fleshed out?
I think he's here. I'd say appoint him.
Okay, good. Let's do it. All right. Well, then, do we need to take a vote on that appointment?
Yes, there would be a motion in a second.
Is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
All second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Elfs?
Aye.
Councilmember Huffdie?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Warnekov?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. And thank you again, Gary. Sorry. All right, per the earlier discussion, we're going to swap the order of the next agenda, so we will be moving on to the public hearing, which will be, it's item number seven A in the agenda, but it's the next agenda item. So I'm assuming we have a staff update. And as a reminder, this is a continuation of the conversation we started at the meeting on the 22nd last Wednesday.
Thank you, guys. Just give me one moment. I'm gonna load my presentation. All right. Good evening, council members. My name's Adrian Smith. I'm a senior planner with the town. So tonight, we're looking again at the adoption of ordinances, amending the zoning code and zoning map. So our meeting purpose is an introduction of ordinances, amending Title 18 Portola Valley's municipal code, the zoning code, as well as the zoning map. And this is to implement our 2023-2031 housing element. And this is, again, continued from our public hearing last week on May 22nd, 2024. For meeting format, I'll pass this over to Attorney Engberg.
Great, thank you. This is a reminder to the council and the community that we are going to be following a segmented process for the adoption of the, of the zoning ordinances to allow participation by councilmembers who are, have conflicts with various portions of the, of the proposed code. So as a reminder, earlier in the process, Mayor Wernikoff has recused from discussions regarding Willow Commons. At his for convenience, has recused on all properties in the Napaust, which include 4370 Alpine and 4394 Alpine. Likewise, pursuant to FDC advice, Vice Mayor Haskell has also recused on those same three properties in light of the quote 500 to 1,000 foot rule. These three properties are all proposed for the new mixed use, land use zone. And as a result, if any council member wants to discuss, deliberate on the mixed use, land use designation, or any of the applicable design standards, we need to provide an opportunity for the mayor and the vice mayor to recuse themselves, which means actually leaving the schoolhouse. So in terms of process, there will be a, Adrian will continue the staff presentation. If council has any clarifying questions about the mixed use zone, we will have, Mayor and Vice Mayor leave the schoolhouse for those clarifying questions. When they come back, there can be other clarifying questions. And then we'll go on to public comment. Following the public comment, we will have a segmented discussion. And so bring up, you'll bring it back to council. And if any council member wants to have more discussion about the mixed use standards, the mayor and vice mayor will leave again. And, and then when they come back, there can be a discussion of the remainder of the zoning code. One other thing I wanted to note is pursuant to very recent FDC advice, we've actually split up the zoning code amendments into two ordinances. They're attached to the staff report as basically ordinance one, ordinance two. Ordinance one is the mixed use only, and then ordinance two is everything else. So if council's prepared to vote this evening, there can be separate motions on those two ordinances, such that, you know, the mayor and the vice mayor would only participate in the second of the two ordinances. Any questions about that before we go on?
Yeah, one quick question. Are we voting tonight or do we vote next time? I know we had talked about maybe putting it on consent, because it had to be at a regular meeting, is my understanding. So what, what does voting mean tonight?
Yeah. So ordinances require two votes. You've got to vote on the introduction, and then you've got to vote again on the adoption. Tonight is set up for the introduction. It does not have to happen at a regular meeting. And so if council prepared to move forward, then I would recommend that you vote on the two ordinances tonight. And then you'd see them again at your next council meeting on June 12th for a second vote. And then that's where typically they would go on the consent calendar, because you really can't change anything substantively between the first and second reading, otherwise you've got to start all over again with a, with a media introduction.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, I'll hand it back off to Adrian.
Thanks, Catherine. It's just a brief reminder of staff and consultants working on this project in terms of who's with us this evening. Terrence Grindel, to my left, our interim support for planning and building department. So he's here to help us out this evening. Catherine as well. And then our two consultants, Monica and David from Lisa Wise Consulting, they're joining us via Zoom this evening. So just a couple of slides to recap our discussion last week. So town council first considered the draft code and zoning map amendments. Staff recommended council consider incorporating a few additional amendments to address issues of clarity and consistency with state law. I do go over this in the staff report, and that's reflected in our revised draft. We did discuss it live, and there was no objections at the time. So we went ahead and incorporated those changes into the draft. Council then requested a few grammatical revisions to reconcile some, some issues, just for clarity. Then the additional item that came up was the term fronting as related to the story maximum for units located adjacent to Napaust Avenue. And this is for the 4370 Alpine Road housing site. So there was two different understandings of what fronting meant. Council directed staff to work with the Napaust neighborhood representative to come to an agreement on how to fix that wording. We did that very quickly. That's, again, detailed in the staff report and reflected in the code. And I did share that as well with the property owner, just to make sure he was aware. He confirmed he understood, so I think we're in good shape there. Another item that was discussed, council expressed their support for timely development of Ladera Church housing site, and also sought a way to clarify how the town could support the church's affordable housing endeavors. And this is, discussion came out of the fact that the church has identified several site constraints that could prevent them from building to a higher number of dwelling units. So what we've gone ahead to, to propose here to deal with this is we revised our definition of density. This is in the definition section in the draft code. And we, to complement that revised density definition, we've added in a definition of net acre. So this is to clarify expected unit production for our mixed use and multifamily sites based on developable area. So this means gross acreage minus constraints, constrained parts of the parcel. So these are non-developable areas. So this is actually quite consistent with our housing element, where we talk about developable area discussion as it relates to the Glen Oak site, as well as several other sites. So it's consistent from that perspective. Council also supported the Planning Commission's proposed colleagues memo. And this is going to capture a list of near to midterm priority items. These are important items that came up throughout the zoning code amendment process, but it fell outside the immediate scope of the required amendments to implement the housing element. So council provided some feedback, which, which they wanted to relay to the Planning Commission, namely that the proposed items that would show up in the memo would not add further restrictions or constraints to our proposed zoning code amendments, and that also that the memo would be produced in a timely manner and forwarded on to council quickly. So this feedback was relayed to memo authors, Chair John Golden and Vice Chair Nicholas Targ from Planning Commission. And then they put forward a few questions that I've put into the presentation. This could help structure council's discussion on this item. So the memo authors are wondering, are there specific objectives and priorities for further work that council is, is interested in, and which groups council might have in mind to conduct this work, whether that's the ASCC Planning Commission, or perhaps the Planning Commission ASC subcommittee that came out of the zoning code amendment process. And then secondly, does council have specific goal items? So for example, identifying that a comprehensive zoning code update should be on the list of priorities, or establishing a streamlined objective design process for small scale affordable housing projects. And then staff just want to offer this recommendation to council that we begin this process of implementing the priority items after we go through housing element recertification, just to sort of phase that process. So that brings us to next steps. We'll be meeting again on June 12th, hopefully, for the second reading of the two ordinances. And we'll hopefully be wrapping up that part of the process. So just a short presentation this evening. I want to let council get to its discussion, but please let me know if you have any questions for staff or consultants.
Thank you, Adrian. All right, questions?
I have a couple. Adrian, I'm looking at one of the public comments that was submitted, and one of the, they're, they're going to net acre and the parking requirements. And what I want to understand, the assertion is that the, I'm trying to look at it now, I lost it, that net acre definition might increase the number of parcels and place areas of development adjacent to potentially dangerous areas, earthquake zones, things like that. Do you, did you see that comment? And do you have a view on it?
Yes, the, the, the idea of going to net acreage is actually to provide more flexibility to not require development in those, in those areas that are not developable. So it, it actually, by using net acreage, it actually allows for areas that are not appropriate for development to be, to be held back from development without impacting the development. For example, with the, with the church, without impacting their plans for the development. In other words, not requiring them to increase the density on the remaining developed area, but to be able to simply stay at the density level as required by the state and, and the housing element, but not, but it wouldn't require an increase in density. Hopefully, I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, you did. You did. Thank you. And the other comment that was made there actually made me go back and read the, the statement about the parking. And that's one I do want to parse out, because I think our, our goal, or I understood a goal of, of the last round was to say, we don't need a carport, and we don't need a garage. And yet, the exception says this does not apply at all. And there, what that removes is the obligation for parking spaces to be on site. So I'm wondering whether you need to, like, is that an accurate reading? And if you have any comments, I can wait for discussion for what to do about that. But 18.60.030, for example, on page 78?
Yeah, the intent there, as you identified, is just to indicate that required site parking for residents and guests do not have to be, as you say, enclosed in a carport or a garage. That's all we're trying to do. We're not trying to waive base parking requirements. We're not doing that.
Yeah, if you look at it, the first line says, except required guest parking shall be in a carport or garage. That piece, I think, is what you're saying, we don't want to apply in that last sentence. But then that sentence goes on to say, and all spaces shall be located on the same parcel or building site. And I think the, if I understand the public comment correctly, the idea is, yeah, we, we still want parking for those units to be on the site. And if that's the case, we just have to do a little drafting to make that, this requirement does not apply to the RMF 23 zoning district, apply only to the carport and garage. Did that make sense?
Yes. I'm looking at it now, and I think that's right. So that was an oversight. So we'll just have to rejig that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Two nods. How about you, Craig?
And just one clarification, sorry to interrupt. In terms of questions, we are gonna, if there are any mixed questions about mixed use, yeah, we'll have the mayor and vice mayor leave the schoolhouse.
Thanks for the reminder. Okay.
Very short, unfortunately, very short.
That's right.
So I just wanted to get a little bit more information. You talked to the property owner at twenty-three seventy? I think that's the right.
Forty-three seventy? Forty-three seventy, yep.
Forty, yeah, sorry, twenty-three, forty-three, you know, slightly dislocated. So what, what was his response? I mean, was it just like, oh, you're forcing this on me or that's fine? That doesn't seem to impact the kind of plans that I was thinking of anyway?
He, he just said, okay, so my understanding is that the second story, he uses a specific example, a second story of a single family home could only begin at the fifty-foot setback mark. And I said, I said, yes, you've got it, any unit for the second story. I just want to be clear that it's not just residents, a single family residential, it's whatever is built on that site. So I said, your understanding is confirmed.
Okay, and, and he seemed to feel like that, that you didn't get a lot of pushback on that?
No, you just wanted to make sure he understood.
He was just looking for clarity, but he wasn't pushing back.
Right.
Okay, great. Think that's it, thank you.
Before we bring them back to the schoolhouse, I just wanted to check with council office and council, have you seen any questions about mixed use? Nope, okay, then, thank you.
While they're still out, can I ask, is the work that the ASC subcommittee is potentially doing, the update zoning and stuff, is, is that stuff that we can't talk about, we have to segment the discussion?
So if it does relate to those parcels.
Well, it relates to simpler design standards, potentially to those zones.
Then I would recommend, if you have a specific direction on those. I think that's going to be a separate conversation. I mean, it's, it could be, take place as, as part as this evening, but in terms of, of, it won't be in the ordinance itself, it'll be by, you know, separate track.
So we can do that later?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Craig, did you have any questions not on mixed use?
No, I think we covered the two that I was concerned with, so I think I'm good.
Okay. Can I ask if one of them had to do with multifamily? Did, what, did, I, okay.
Parking and developable.
Okay, okay. Again, just so we can have the benefit of your wise questions. Mary and Jeff, any questions? No questions? No questions, okay. I also don't have any questions, so we can go to public comment. Do we have any hands in the schoolhouse for public comment? John Silver. This is on.
Because there is no printed agenda, and I haven't had, had time to go along. I don't know what either it is, so I'm going to ask that.
Well, this is on the zoning ordinance, so the, this is on the zoning ordinance, so we just have to have the comments within the.
Why not make a request related to the question I just asked? For old, older people who aren't sixteen anymore, why not have some printed agenda and post the darn thing? Which I'm, it's hard for me not to cuss when I say that, outside.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's important.
All right.
Thank you.
Bob Adams?
First, I want to again thank you, Craig, for following up on our note number three on page one twenty-four. And he made it very clear that if we couldn't come to an agreement, that he made nothing would happen with there. And I said to Adrian, I think it's going to take five minutes. It took maybe ten. And Terrence was there, Monica was there, Adrian was there. So I thank you all for making sure that you gave us a chance to make that happen and I appreciate what you're doing for us, so thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I don't see any additional hands raised in the schoolhouse, so I will go to Zoom, Tim Clark.
Yes, thank you, mayor. This is Tim Clark of Ladera Community Church. And I'm speaking as an individual and not as a representative of the church. But I want to say thank you to the town council and to the staff for the way they've handled the zoning aspects of our proposed housing project. Last week, we got near unanimous support, and maybe it was unanimous. I kind of felt, I missed one part of it. And we thank you with appreciation for supporting our efforts. We, it's the whole, the matter is of course not concluded because there's many future steps and we will be back. But we appreciate your support at this time. I also want to thank the staff, the planning staff and the town attorney for being so creative and coming up with a solution that is embedded in, I think, both the ordinance and the memo that staff has sent that would allow us to do this forward. I actually got a phone call from Terrence, the interim planning director, who had to explain it to me because having read it, it was a little too subtle for my non-planning mind. But I get it. And I think it's not a significant, any significant change to the overall zoning ordinance. And so as, I would say that I hope you can adopt the ordinance, especially the part that relates to our property. I think it will be mutually beneficial to both the church and to the Portola Valley community. Related to the vice mayor's question a few minutes ago about parking on our site. It is the condition of the church that the parking be on the parcel that we have, which of course will limit the number of units. The church is not interested in sharing its parking lot with the housing development. I also want to thank the planning commission and the ASCC for the considerable time that they put into considering our requests about the zoning. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Next up is Nan Showstock, Nan?
Yes, hi, thanks very much. Yeah, it was my comment about the question about the zoning density. And I respectfully disagree with the, the answer that the council received. Denser development, more development is going to push, push building out into areas that have heretofore been pretty much off limits because of land use constraints, geologic constraints. And if we build closer to areas that are geologically unsuitable, like landslides or liquefaction zones or the, you know, the fault zones, then we are treading somewhat dangerously. It's, you know, this, let's take the San Andreas Fault Zone, for instance. If I owned two acres and the fault zone went right through and eliminated one, half of my property, one acre from development. And I wanted to, I wanted to say I'm in an MF twenty, twenty zone. It wouldn't pencil out for me. If I had to put twenty units on my, well, I'd put forty, forty units on my two acres. But if I can count the two acres as just one acre developable, then I can put twenty acre, twenty units and that I can afford. I can get bonus density, I can perhaps get thirty units there and all is well for me, the developer. Not so, it's not so good for the people living there because if you're close to an area that's put off limits from our, by our land use regulations, you're still at risk. And there is a, there's another safety concern and that is for, for evacuation. If we're evacuating from, say, earthquake zones or landslide areas or close to them, then we want the population there to be as, as low as possible. My point is simply, we're pushing more people into more dangerous or potentially dangerous areas when we change the definition of density. It's not to, I don't want to to eliminate any developments that we have in, that are in the pipeline now. Yeah, I know I'm at three minutes, but we're changing the density for all future development and we need to think very carefully before we do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Nan. I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom or on school or in the schoolhouse, so I will bring, oh, we have one additional hand raised in the schoolhouse. So this is for comments on the zoning.
Thank you, I just handed in the speaker just moments ago. Agenda item number I didn't have, so I just wrote this one. We talking, was the area in question close to Ladera Community Church? The prior speaker spoke of geol, you know. What area does this apply to? I'm sorry. What, what specific area of town?
You did already speak on this, on this item, but I understand the mayor has allowed you another.
Question, and then perhaps a comment. What, the last speaker who has some knowledge of geology spoke of exposing people to potential geologic dangers. What parcels does this apply to, that are being referred to? Wasn't clear to me. All over town?
The zoning is related to all over town, but this is not a, this is not a back and forth. You can make a public comment, you have, you have two minutes left and I can't answer any more questions.
I can do that pretty quick. We always need to, I don't have a degree in geology. I took one course many years ago at San Antonio State. But I learned at, with the patient guidance of two world-class experts, George Mater, the late George Mater, and Bill Cotton, our longtime town geologist. Well, Max Cribb, these, these people were Bob Wallace. Top, top people in their fields. Anyway, there are places we can build safely and others not. Obviously, I don't think this, I'm hoping this ordinance wouldn't override Resolution five hundred or our seismic safety setbacks. To study it well, do the science, you can do it safely. We don't have to go the way of Turkey. We don't have to give in to corruption or stupid regulation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, John. So with that, no other hands raised in the schoolhouse. Now we have one more on Zoom, Kristy Corley.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to comment on the parking that I believe that every unit should have a parking place. And the overflow parking should never go into our grocery areas for the convenience of the current and upcoming residents. So how can you assure us that if it's two bedroom, gets two, two parking places? If it's three bedroom, three parking places? Or one bedroom, one parking place? Can you please discuss this in detail? And discuss the parking garages for the residents of Portola Valley? I mean garages underground. As we know, each parking place costs money and it may not allow a pencil out, but it's very important to the residents that the overflow areas do not go to Portola roads such as Wendy Hill is happening. And when Hawthorne starts parking and the overflow goes to Alpine Road. And then some of these developments go over to our grocery area, parking areas and restaurant areas. So can you discuss this more? Because these meetings are one week apart for clarity. And the residents need to fully understand what's happening with parking. We only have one bus going to and from the high school at three o'clock and early in the morning. We do not have buses going to Caltrans that take people to their work sites, say in San Jose or San Francisco. And this is my concern, I've always fought for, you know, buses, adequate buses if we're going to go to this. So I'd appreciate more discussion on this. And for the residents to fully, fully understand it. So rushing this through tonight in one week, when it's just been revised in the last couple of days, does that give the residents adequate time to thoroughly read and make their comments? I feel that they need time to absorb the information, to understand the information that you just rewrote in the last, you know, four days or so. We've got the agenda Friday and it's six o'clock Wednesday. And I just happened to look that it is six o'clock versus seven o'clock at noon today. And I'm wondering if the rest of the residents realize that this meeting's at six o'clock versus seven o'clock. So there were changes in that, but I'd appreciate more time, thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. All right, I believe that's the last hand raised, so I will close oral communications and bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to start?
And again, I'd suggest that we take up the mixed use discussion separately. You could do that first. You're so inclined. If there's any discussion to be had around mixed use.
Does anybody have discussions specifically on mixed use? No, it doesn't look like, no, he had his questions, but thank you. All right, do you want to start discussion? Thank you.
So the public comments brought up some interesting questions I did want to follow up on. So the, first of all, this sort of developable area, is that applied to all zones or just MF twenty-three?
Just mixed use and the, and the identity, yes.
Okay. So then the second part of my question is, are there any unintended consequences of having this? And am I treading, I mean, given this is between the two of them, since this applies to both mixed use and this, can I keep running this line or do I need to? Sorry.
I see what you're saying. It's a, it's a general term of term, I, I'm fine proceeding.
I also have that question on what I can comment on.
The answer, the question and the, the question is the same and the answer is the same regardless of which zoning district we're in, so go ahead.
Thank you. So are there unintended consequences of applying this? I mean, certainly Nan was trying to propose that if there was an earthquake fault, somehow that would make the space less. I, I don't think I completely understood because I would have thought if there was an earthquake fault, you couldn't have built there anyway. And there were setbacks. Are we saying that if you have two acres and half of it's not, you're not allowed to build because of various, you know, seismic setback? That you'd still be required to do the density, the full two acres? Because I, I thought that was the argument that I heard Nan saying was because we're saying the developable area is only an acre, then you could do only twenty units. Whereas before you would have had to do forty. So I, I'm a little confused, so I was hoping you, as planning people, could clarify so that, you know, I could understand better.
I appreciate the opportunity to have a chance to clarify. I want to make clear that this, what, this, this definition of density does not affect the maximum density. It's not an increase in density. So the maximum and the minimum density on the property is not affected by this. This simply says that if, if the, if, if the, not the entire area is developed, if parts of the area are, are not developable, then the zoning standards apply to the, the net area. But it does not change them, does not. But it does not change them, does not increase them. There's no, and you know, there's no banking of, of units. There's no, there's no transfer of development rights or anything like that. The same density standards are in effect. So I can, so I can understand the public's confusion. It's, it is a complicated and seemingly distinction without a difference. But it actually is important that, and the, the, and the, I think we, we believe that the consequences are intended, that it will facilitate the appropriate development that, that the housing element and the zoning ordinance envision.
I think it was the, as I understood the comment, it was that if you had two acres and it was reduced, the developable area was reduced, that, that all of a sudden you could build 20 units on a piece of property that if you didn't have the developable area restriction, would have required 40 units. So it wasn't that you got more, you could bank it or any of those things. It was somehow this would allow people to develop their two acres with only 20 units because of the developable area. Whereas in, without the developable area, they wouldn't be able to develop at all. I think that was the, the intent. Does, does that make sense? I'm just trying to get my head around the, the sort of, so it's not about more. I get it's less. But does it potentially allow you to, as a developer, to do something that you couldn't have done if the developable area wasn't there?
No, it does not. The same density requirements and, and all other standards apply to that net area. It does not provide any additional incentive or transfer of rights.
Right. I feel like we're just not quite getting to the nub of it, which is, it seemed like if you have two acres and it's zoned to be 20 units per acre, then to develop that two acres, assuming there are no other restrictions, you would have to put 40 units there. Is that correct?
Yes, except we, we're, zoning districts have both a minimum and a, and a maximum zoning district, zoning amount. So, so if you're talking about the maximum, which the commenter seemed to be most, most concerned about. If you had, if you had a two-acre, and again, I'm sorry for the hypotheticals, but I'll try to make clear. If you had a two-acre parcel that, which I'm, I'm not speaking of any particular parcel, by the way. So if you had a two-acre parcel that was zoned for a minimum of 10 and a maximum of 15 units, and one of those acres, for whatever reason, conservation or seismic, whatever reason, one of those wasn't appropriate for development, then you would be able to build one, on the one acre, the five, the, the 10 to the 15 units. So wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't double or, or subtract from that, from that area. Did that help at all?
Well, I, I think it's, so you know, that, that's my understanding as well. I think the comment was, if you have a two-acre parcel, and given that our sort of minimums and maximums kind of pushed, got pushed together, right, so we don't, I mean, all our things are pretty much all, minimum is the maximum generally. I think the question was, on a two-acre parcel, if there are no restrictions, if it's 10 acres, just, just, we'll say the minimum, just keep it simple, the 10 acres per, you know, 10 units per acre, that'd be 20 units on that parcel.
Right.
Could you build less on that parcel than 10, given a zoning of 10 acre, 10 units per acre? Because I think what the, the commenter was saying is, because it's two acres, you're required to do 20 units.
Right. So if you, and, and again, and again, there's a minimum density and a maximum.
Right. So I'm saying, let's just take the minimum. Let's focus on the minimum.
Just on the minimum. Thank you. You would be, you would, you would, would have to match the minimum on that net developable area. So if, you would, you would have to, at a minimum, and again, this is a hypothetical. If at a minimum, you'd have to, if you had a one-acre development on a two-acre parcel, the one acre, one of the acres not being developable, then you would have to meet the minimum on that one acre. So that would be 10 in your example.
But I think the commenter was saying, without the developable area, the, the area that you're supposed to build on is two acres. Therefore, the amount you have to build are 20 units. Because we're allowing for this developable area, all of a sudden, a parcel that you might not have been able to develop 20 units on, just for cost, if nothing else. All of a sudden, now I only have to develop 10 units on this two-acre parcel because an acre of it's undevelopable under some set of rules. And now all of a sudden, it becomes available for development from a cost-effective point. I think that was the, the comment, as I understood. So it sounds like it is an, an unintended consequence. It may be a, you know, like you said, it's a hypothetical. But, but I just want to make sure I understand that that is potentially the case.
Yes, well, the, it is potentially the case that this would facilitate, this will provide more flexibility to property owners that would, that would otherwise have a hard time, that, that weren't interested in building a high-density product and wanted to build a product that was more, that was consistent with the density, with the overall density of our, of our zoning district. So it would provide flexibility for properties. So that's, that's the, that's why I call it an intended consequence. What this does is it provides the property owners the flexibility to do the product that they want to do so they can actually build the affordable housing that the community has identified in the housing element.
Okay. And, and we're applying it to all zones and would it apply to all zones in the future? I mean, I mean, are we literally limiting to two zones? Or if we came up with additional sort of multifamily zones, it would apply to those as well?
No, it only applies to the zones that are identified in, in the ordinance that talks about the multifamily and the, and the mixed use.
Okay, thank you. And so then the second question was following up on this parking. So I think we all agree that our goal was to have all the parking that's required. And I think the question that was coming across was, are we requiring enough parking? Or are we going to end up with people trying to park on Portola Road? Or park on side streets or park in shopping centers or churches or whatever? So, I mean, how, I, I thought the essence of that question was, you know, how much parking do we require? And is it sufficient so that, you know, that we don't have parking out on the street or in other places? Even if it was technically that they met the legal requirement? Does that make sense?
Yeah, this was discussed at length at the Planning Commission and, and ASCC level. That was an important part, is that we wanted to make sure, we understood, we don't have adequate public transit here. So we're looking to make sure that we provide a reasonable level of base parking so that people will actually have a place. Because reasonably, or, or, if we think about it, people are going to have, you know, one to two vehicles. That's just, you know, how it is. So the, the ratios that we built in for, because what we did was we worked with our existing parking chapter, and then we just added in ratios based on number of bedrooms for our new parking zones. And so that, I think they're reasonable minimums and shouldn't cause, you know, crazy overflow situations. Again, the change we made was just simply not to require covered parking. We didn't, we know that. We weren't reducing any minimum parking requirements. We weren't trying to create a burden there at all.
But I guess the question is, is it enforceable? Because I know certainly like on ADUs, the state was saying, sorry, you can't require parking. And then certainly in some areas, that seemed like a pretty big deal. I mean, if, if those ADUs came to pass in streets where they're really narrow. So I guess that's the question. So you're, you feel fairly comfortable where we put a reasonable number in. I think my final follow-up on this is, do we have, as a town, any enforcement if people are parking outside of the area that they live? And, and I'm not talking about a party, you know, I mean, there's, you know, there's, there's always overflow situations. But, you know, on a regular basis, you know, assume something goes in on Alpine Road and all of a sudden, on a regular basis, much like Wendy Hill on the weekend, there are people parked on the street all the time.
I wish we had Howard here because he knows where we have signed areas that indicate there's no street parking and where it's allowed. But certainly if there, if we ended up with a problem with overflow parking in areas that just aren't safe, we would, we would have to make, we could make an amendment to the code. You can indicate certain streets where you can't do street parking, like, we could react to that. In terms of enforcement of a development project, providing the minimum number of spaces, well, we'd make sure that was captured in the entitlement process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Right. Did you have any comments for discussion? Because we were on this, weren't we on discussion? Yeah. Okay, just, that's okay.
Question at the same time. So that's, I'm good.
Who would like to go next?
Okay. So thank you for, for the revisions you've made and working with, with the neighbors of the parcels to, to, to make sure everyone's comfortable going forward. I think the, I think the net acreage is a good adjustment, actually, because it actually, it keeps the same density over the actual buildable portion of the lot. I think it's actually really, makes a lot more sense. I also think I'm, I'm comfortable with the parking, as long as we are talking about the covered parking or carports, not the total number of units. That should be kept consistent. I think with these changes, I'm actually very comfortable moving forward.
No, no comments for discussion?
I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay.
I just have a clarification, and it's keying off of Craig's question. My understanding is, on the density issue, you still have the setbacks from an, a, a fault zone, right? Nothing here is superseding anything like that.
You're, you're absolutely correct. There's, there's no change in other development regulations involved with setbacks from salt, salt zones or repair in or any, any, any other site setbacks.
Okay. And on the parking, I suppose, I'm just looking at like how to think about it. Are the only units that are not required to have parking at this point in time, ADUs? Like, is that essentially as of today?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. So a new unit that's not an ADU would have a space somewhere?
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Well, I didn't have any questions about the zoning. Thank you for all those questions asked and clarified. What I wanted to talk about related to, was related to the background section of this agenda item within the packet, pages 13 and 14, with respect to next steps for the Planning Commission and the ASCC and/or the Subcommittee, however that shakes out. My understanding is that there's a little confusion and they would appreciate some guidance from us in terms of, and, and staff, if you can, Catherine, it's my understanding that you would also request a little clarity around here. So please feel free to chime in. But that's the, the last item. I just wanted to revisit, make sure it was clear.
So my understanding, when I asked Catherine, this is something we're going to talk about after the zoning, since it's a follow-on.
Well, it's, I guess it's up to you how you want to structure it. You need, if, if everyone's prepared to, you know, vote on the zoning ordinance, you can do that now. Or you could have this discussion regarding direction to the Planning Commission first and then take the vote. It is all part of the same agendized item, but the, it obviously will be to a separate track.
Yeah, to me, it's part of the same agenda item, and this is an important part that informs my vote. So I'd like to have a discussion now. That's okay.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I'm now going to want to then deal with the next use question on this part. So I was hoping to put it off, and that's why, but, but we're all good, so.
Do you want to go ahead and ask your questions now and just get it out of the way?
I do.
We'll leave. Okay.
Sorry. So this is discussion on sort of the follow-up. I'll call it post-zoning follow-up. So there's, there's sort of the general piece of sort of when this is going to get done, to sort of move this ahead. And I can restate some of these comments when we're having the general discussion. But in particular, it seemed like one of the comments that had, had come through pretty clearly was that the design standards were applied across all the zones, but they were design standards that were kind of design standards for big projects. And even if you had very low density, sort of, you know, two to four, two to six, whatever, we were, we were applying the same kind of design standard. And I, my understanding was one of the things that the Subcommittee was going to do was going to look at simpler design standards that might be more along the lines of what you would expect for a resident in sort of resident, residential design standard. So I think that's, that's a good question for now, right? And without, so.
Yeah, I think, I think you're asking a question, but you're also answering it from, from your perspective. Like, that, that would be a priority item for council to see, right? Is to see some sort of work product around this. And this is, has been a recurring discussion, and certainly from the, from ASCC, from the Subcommittee, just a desire to have a really simplified, mostly design, design expectations for small-scale, simple, affordable projects.
So then the, the question is, how soon, and, and you know, I asked you in private as well, but I'm now asking you in public. I mean, what would it take us to get there? And, and at least part of the answer you gave me earlier was, most of it's going to be consumed in public meetings, ASCC or PC, that the actual working up the standards from a planning point of view, you thought was relatively simple. Is that, you want to comment on what you think that timeline looks like? I mean, are we talking two months, two years? You know what I mean? I'm just trying to quantify this and, because I, you know, I'd like to be able, when we're done, to be able to give the Subcommittee sort of some marching orders of, you know, we'd like you to come back to us within this timeframe. But I want it to be a timeframe that's reasonable to let them get the work done. You know, and not just, you know, because I, I want it to be quickly enough that anybody who wants to develop this stuff isn't like hung out for a year, waiting for this stuff to show up with uncertainty between now and then. But I also don't want it to be, oh, let's do it next month if it's not realistic to get it done in that timeframe.
Right. I think because this is sort of a separate process, separate from the amendments required to get our housing element recertified, we have the benefit of more time. We heard that time and again from ASCC Planning Commission residents that they wanted sufficient time to work through these details. So yes, I, I, I would say definitely that's going to be the, the lengthiest part of the process of the public hearings to let those bodies have the time they need. In terms of having a consultant put together a draft of, of design standards, I think that, that wouldn't take that long. I wouldn't want to, I don't, you know, I wouldn't want to commit our consultants. We haven't even decided if our consultants would do the work or, you know. But maybe, maybe they'd need a month, month and a half to get something together. And then we would, and, and it depends on the desired process of the Subcommittee. Maybe the Subcommittee wants to take a stab at it, and then the consultant refines. So we, we would figure out process. So, but to your point, it's not going to take years. We just need to make sure that Planning Commission can meet, ASCC can meet, that they have the time, the number of meetings that they want.
So if, if we sort of, you know, gave them direction to work on this and sort of set a timeline like six months, that doesn't seem unreasonable.
Not, not immediately, but then I sort of think, hmm, I think we'd want to build in a little extra time for, for hearings. Just to make sure.
I guess I was building hearings into six months, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I, you know, the thing is, I don't want to be too prescriptive here, but I also don't want this to drag on. I, I mean, I, I would like it to be a priority. And I'm speaking a little bit from the post-housing element plan, which seemed like it took a year longer than it should have. I mean, I may be exaggerating, but that's what it felt like. And so I, I'd like that not to repeat at quite that level. So, I mean, I guess that's what I'm after. I realize we're still in a place where we need to get the zoning in, we need to get HCD to recertify our housing, and you guys are going to be kind of booked making sure that happens.
Right.
So is that a two-month process with six months on top of it? I mean, I'm not trying to get too exact, but I, I don't want this to be a year. That feels too long to me. Like, to have to wait a year to get simplified design standards seems way too long. Six months feels right to me. Seems like you're hesitating.
I'd like to say, I'd like to say, and you can't hold me to it, six to eight months. Can you say that?
Okay, fair enough.
I think that's sort of an area I could be comfortable with. We do also have a Chair of the Planning Commission who's in the audience this evening. I don't know if we can hear from him on his expectations for timing and that kind of stuff. stuff. That be all right?
Well, the mayor's not here, so.
Through the, through the faux-chair.
Yeah, interim chair, I defer to you, if you'd like to ask.
Sure. You guys are okay with that, yeah? John, would you want? Thank you for joining us tonight.
You're more than welcome. This is John Golden, currently the Chair of the Planning Commission. With respect to timing, I think we're good on that. I don't see anything pushing to a year. When it, when some of these items came up, people were sort of, the verbal comments were, I need like six months for that. I think that was actually tossed out at some point, so that seems reasonable in terms of pulling it together, and should be pretty good.
Well, I'm comfortable, go ahead. I was gonna say, I'm comfortable with six to eight months. I guess what I wanted to be careful is that we didn't rope in a lot of, oh, let's clean up the zoning code, let's do the dinner, and turn it into, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do five other things, and by the time we do all of these things, it takes a year and a half. So, if, if you can fit in the design standards and the things that would allow people to move with their projects as one piece of it, and then if you think there's other stuff you need to do to continue to clean up, I'm happy to segment that in a separate thing. So does that, that seem like a reasonable path?
Totally.
Okay.
Totally. In fact, that was kind of my request coming into this, was, we had a long list there, without any prioritization, getting guidance from the council on, look, what are the pieces you really want us to work on, so that we can get it done expeditiously, as opposed to the entire list.
Right. So then, Catherine, how do we prioritize that list, given that one of the things on the list is simplified design standards, and it's segmented?
Would you say that the priority for mixed use is the same, in terms of the simplification, is the same for the multifamily?
Well, I mean, it's not in this, at least if I understand it, and I'll let the planners pipe in here if I'm getting it wrong, but it really applies to the mixed use and the low density. It doesn't apply to, like MF23. Like MF23 is kind of what those standards were built for, but it doesn't really apply. And it also, I mean, I think you could argue, it's not really gonna apply to Ladera Church, even though they're in that MF23, because they're talking about potentially using prefab homes. So, I guess it applies to both, so maybe we can just sort of wing it, but, but very particularly, I mean, I'm expecting, if we had other MF23 zones in town, that these simplified design standards that are more residential probably wouldn't apply. Is that, you see what I'm getting at? Yeah?
Let's see, so I guess, you're, the Chair of the Planning Commission's here, and has heard your direction from the three of you that can provide direction on mixed use, so that may be sufficient direction.
Okay. Thanks. So then, John, since you're here, other, other things that were on the list, so there was zoning code, you know, the zoning code amendment, you know, our zoning code cleanup, what else was on the list, and where would you have prioritized this sort of simplified design standards?
So, I, so in terms of other things on the list, so, you know, we had overall issues of, we found various things potentially wrong in the zoning code. I'd sort of put that on the back burner until we have more staff. It's like, yeah, we should fix it, but it's not really hurting anything. In general, what I have heard is a desire to simplify, both, I would apply to both the zoning code and the processes to facilitate our housing element. And that would include, potentially include stuff that's even not on the list if we start digging. If that's the objective and the goal, how do we make this real? How do we actually move from the satisfying the HCD to now, how do we make some of this stuff happen and work with our local developers? Then, that's a goal and an objective. So that picks up other, a couple of examples that would come to mind would be, right now we have references in this new zoning code to other pieces of zoning code that have those other, which is totally legal, because they're older pieces, but those older pieces are mixed, mixed objective and subjective all in one place. So it's not very clear, if you're trying to develop a piece of property, what do you do with that? My suggestion, again, just me, was, we need a committee to work on it, would be, go in, separate that stuff out, and make it very clear to our housing element sites what it takes.
And this is sort of, get, pull the objective standards out, so they're.
Pull them out, yes, and make sure they're not onerous, but just so that they're, it's all in place, and you really have a clear ministerial path to providing these, and making these housing element items work. Another example would be our zoning code, sorry, not zoning, grading code. We have a very objective grading code, which was designed for single-family homes. As soon as you get into multifamily development, you're gonna move this into, out of ministerial, and require it to come to the Planning Commission. So, that probably needs adjustment to work with these multifamily units. So, those are like two examples that come to mind, if you, the goal was streamline processes and code to make it work for our housing element items, those would be the items that pull off the list. There's a bunch of other items on there that I think would be potentially lower priority. But we had them all, they all came up, and that's why they all landed on the list.
And, and does this feel like the, these ones we're just discussing now, or something that could get done in the six to eight month time frame?
Yeah.
Okay. So we could sort of group that set of stuff together, and not worry about it dragging on?
Yeah, and what I'd suggest is you ask the teams to group it together for you, given to identify the overall goal of what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. Great, thank you. Other questions for John, or for planning on this? Okay, great. That was it for me. Thank you. I think that's the end of the non.
Of all the mixed use? Okay.
I did want to say something to John. What an amazing job you guys have done, really. ASCC and Planning Commission, I don't think you've been told thank you enough. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we can bring them back in. Thank you.
So I'll just ask, was there, was there anything that we would benefit from hearing that applies to? Yeah?
I don't think so. There was direction provided in terms of simplification of the mixed use.
Okay.
Is there anything that you feel like that I missed, Craig, that did apply to multifamily?
No, I mean, we, can we talk about, we talked about prioritization and scoping around simplification?
I'd love to hear that, that's.
Well, I, but I think that's the, that's what we can't really talk about, can we? I mean, you tell me, I, this is, this is weird.
Yeah, this is certainly, this is complicated, but yeah. Well, I'm more interested, just, I'm more interested in the process, so not, I don't need the particulars. I think going back to what I originally brought up, in terms of, how do we move forward, in terms of prioritizing?
Right. Okay. So, let me try to sum, I, this is a weird line, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, so I apologize, I'm not, I would love to tell you, like, the entire conversation, so I'm not trying to be weird about it. So I would say, from a process point of view, what we discussed was prioritizing zoning simplifications and code changes, where there's pointers into the code that have subjective and objective stuff, and cleaning that up, so that if you're a developer and you're trying to develop within this zoning, you have a clean path forward. And that that would be the top priority that we would give the Subcommittee to work on cleaning it up, so that it was a clear, obvious path of what you needed to do to do development within these zones. Is that a fair characterization, you guys saying?
And there was a six to eight month.
Right, thank you. And that, that I was basically, didn't want to see this drag out for two years, so I was saying, just six to eight months feel like a time that this could get done, and both Planning thought that was okay, and the Planning Commission, Chair of the Planning Commission, and both thought that, within the context of what they've discussed, that that was reasonable.
So, I'm confused why this was, doesn't really matter, but why this was just relevant for mixed use, but either way, what I want to clarify, going back to my original question, was more broadly, I guess, in terms of the overall output of the ASCC and the Planning Commission. My understanding is, we had general consensus, but jump in if that's not accurate, around simplifying the objective design standards, especially those that support low income because they were feeling overly onerous. Is that what you were just saying? Are we saying the same thing?
The reason you guys were out of the room, it was because it was mixed use, and it was the lower-density ones.
Okay.
So that's.
So I'm just saying it more broadly. That's what.
Okay.
That's my thought.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and I'm not sure I understand the distinction, but.
Okay.
Because I, as I understood it, the design standards for the larger group were sort of meant to be the design standard, but then we were applying them to these lower-density, and that seemed awkward. But, but you're trying to say, what if we called it low income? I just don't know where it fits in, like, when, if we use four field and we put in forty units, I'm assuming that these design standards that are, that they were put forward, were meant to be for those kinds of larger projects.
Well, that one's on town property anyhow, so.
Right, but it, but what we were after was, we were applying the design standards for a four-unit property, when you might only be building four.
Right.
And that was the thing that the Subcommittee was gonna work, to see if they could come up with some suggestions to improve that.
Okay. Through, through the mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Generally, the discussions have been around small, affordable projects. That's, that's the language that ASCC and Planning Commission has been using. John, if I'm, if I'm mischaracterizing that, let me know. All right, so that's my understanding, is that's where their focus would be. And the idea being that the more design elements you add to a project, the more expensive it is. So that's why they want to streamline that somewhat.
Exactly. Okay, so, so that was one, and then the other is streamlining the process to ensure a path for ministerial reviews, to make it clear what is objective and what is discretionary in terms of the process. So did you guys also discuss that? Okay. Right? I'm still confused why I had to leave the room to discuss these things, but this was the item I wanted to talk about.
Yeah, I think that the discussion expanded, sorry about that, but.
It's fine, just so long as I have an opportunity.
The director.
So was there consensus, what was the outcome of the consensus of the three of you to bring Judith and I up to speed?
I feel like you probably understand it the best of the three of us, right? I mean, I. Yeah, and so I think that the consensus was that we would ask the Subcommittee of Planning Commission, ASCC, to basically go and, within six to eight months, come back with a streamlined process, which includes basically breaking apart some of the subjective and objective stuff, so that if you're trying to work on a, and I like this characteri, characterization of basically a low-density project, because in theory, Ladera, I think you could argue, at least, it's certainly, I should be careful, it's not actually low-density, it's small in number, which is different, yeah, small and affordable, which is actually not a density issue. And I think where we're getting caught up is that we can, can't talk with you guys with the low-density stuff, but small and affordable, maybe we can talk about that, because we can just use it. So, I think that was basically the sense, is that we should give them direction, and that, that we should give them a deadline, so that this thing moves forward expeditiously.
On, on the process, though, you said ASCC, Planning Commission Subcommittee, but then what happens? Did you get to that part?
So I think we, as far as I'm concerned, that process can be the same, we can have that, I'm not sure if exactly that's here, but, yeah, okay, you and I, yeah, okay. That, I think we could just decide that here. I mean, I'm, I mean, what we had talked about with the Planning Department was, that it would go through, you know, that they would meet, then it would go through ASCC, then it would go through Planning, and then it'd come to us.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that was generally the, the view of how this was gonna work. But, but I think that's something we could talk about now, if you want something different.
Oh, I think that makes sense to me. It's just, because the two Subcommittee, I would, I find the entire Commission, the comments are very helpful. They have, they bring a lot of different perspectives, even if you get it started with a Subcommittee. I like that process, so I'd be fine with that.
Sort of.
The other thing that we talked about, I can't remember, is just making sure that this focused on the streamlining of the guidelines and of the process, and not pulling things like, 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 there's a general code cleanup, the zoning code cleanup that has to happen, I just want to make sure that didn't get, this didn't become one big process that took a year and a half, as opposed to this focus thing that takes six to eight months. That was the other thing that came out of our discussion.
Thank you, yeah, because that was, that was another thing where I wasn't clear, because I know the Planning Commission had this longer, broader list, that this had sprinkles of overlap, but, and so what was decided in terms of, do we still need the colleagues' memo from the Planning Commission? Like, what are next steps there? Is that decided? Does it need to be? Do you care, John? Like, does that save you?
Well, wasn't the, didn't the Planning Commission?
Okay. Got it. True.
Sorry, I don't understand.
I think what I, and I shouldn't have addressed John, so I apologize. My understanding is, John sits on that Subcommittee, so he would be a liaison to communicate that process to the Planning Commission, and loop in that feedback to whatever their, the Planning Commission's next step would be related to whether or not they would or would not do a colleagues' memo. Is that correct? I'm fine with you just coming to address what you, if, that's okay with you.
Yeah, I just want to understand, because my understanding was, you got the streamlining set of tasks, the Subcommittee, but that the colleagues' memo had a separate punch list of additional items that are not necessarily just streamlining. Is that, yeah?
So, this is John Golden. So it didn't, I was taking back that we didn't need the long, more work on the long laundry list, that we just would focus in on the streamlining code.
What was on the longer list that's not on the streamlining?
Oh, well.
There's a lot of.
There's a lot, I mean, we, it was a list of various items, you know, there was the general code cleanup that we've mentioned, but there was, you know, capitalization issues, there was discussions of, does the, are there any oddball things on the zoning map that we could take a look at? It was a long laundry list, and my preference would be not to worry about those items, and just focus on the goals and objectives from the Town Council. The list still exists.
If you don't want, mind me jumping in, my understanding, correct me if you think I'm wrong, John, that was your list that you put forward. My understanding is, the Planning Commission, one of the reasons they didn't put it for that, that list forward, is because they didn't necessarily agree with it, and that's why they were gonna do the colleagues' memo, to kind of reboot that process. But just so you know, that list wasn't something that the whole Planning Commission was wed to.
Right, but my, my point is, obviously, the Planning Commission had further deliberation to get to some consensus about what we were doing, if anything. So are we cutting all of that effort out, and is that okay? Like, because I agree on prioritizing the streamlining, that, that's.
We didn't have any for this. We started to have it, and then got lost, because we weren't sure what the goals were. So we didn't, as a group, have any big discussion on the whole list.
Then what was this, what was it agreed that the colleagues' memo would address?
To, to start flushing that out, and make it clearer, so that the Planning Commission could then turn around and react to something, and then present it to the Town Council to get their ideas on what priorities we should be working on. So if we're already jumping to priorities of what we would work on, I'd kind of skip the colleagues' memo at this point.
Yeah, I just, my concern is just if there have been focus by the Planning Commission recently, if there is something to keep on our radar. if there is something to keep on our radar, not that it should be prioritized in the same way. I wouldn't want to lose the benefit of that. You guys haven't met that much in the last few years. Having people engaged and having the work product out of the discussion. It would be fine with me if the colleagues memo says, no, we're good on focusing on the streamlining. That would be fine. I just don't want to lose the benefit of whatever discussions that have recently occurred that you've never wrapped up.
I mean, if you'd appreciate it, we could certainly do it. So.
Yeah. Not as a huge time loss from my perspective.
I'm fine with that.
All right, then to recap, to make sure that we're all on the same page. The direction is that the subcommittee of the planning commission and the ASCC are going to take as a priority relooking at simplifying the objective standards, particularly for smaller affordable process properties, to assure that they're not overly onerous, as well as streamlining the process to assure a pass for ministerial review. That is the direction from the council, that that's priority number one. Alongside that, per Judith's suggestion, the planning commission will still put together a colleagues memo to capture the other things on that list as secondary to the priorities. Is that there? And that the the goal of the council is that the item A is completed within six to eight months. All right, and we don't need to vote on that, but it seems like we're all agreeing. So, all right, thank you for your patience because it was getting a little murky and I think it was worthwhile. So I think we can move on to the vote.
Yes, and you are not going to like this advice, but I am going to advise you to leave again for consideration and potential vote on the mixed use only ordinance.
Up and down, up and down.
So. Just make it make it easy. I lost my my page here. The motion, just to be clear, because now there are two ordinances, would be to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance amending title 18, the Portola Valley Municipal Code, and amending the zoning map to amend the 2023 2023 to 2031 housing element, mixed use only ordinance number one of two.
I saw second. Any further discussion? You have a roll call? Councilmember Elfs.
Aye.
Councilmember Hufte.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right.
That motion passed. Great. Congratulations.
And now I would like to entertain a motion on section two of the zoning. How do I reference it?
You can introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance amending title 18 of the Portola Valley Municipal Code and amending the zoning map. This is ordinance number two of two in the packet.
Thank you very much.
No moves.
I'm sorry. I have a question because I had suggested that we clean up some of the language. So can this be incorporating the suggested cleanup item?
Yes, thank you for clarifying. Yes, this will need to incorporate that suggested cleanup item. I forgot to ask Adrian if we have that. Ready to read into the record? And if not, we could take a pause. Yeah, maybe let's just take a quick look to make sure we get it right.
All right, so should we take a take a break? All right.
Five minutes, ten minutes?
Five minute break. Adrian, you let me know. How much time would you like?
Five minutes is probably fine.
Okay, we will resume at 8:05. Thank you. All right, the meeting's back in session.
Yeah.
And before we move forward, you're going to read the language, correct?
I am going to read the amended language for section 18.60.030 off-street parking A. Just to be clear and for the record, this section will now read in residential districts, required parking facilities except required guest parking spaces shall be in a carport or garage. This is the new part, except for the MF23 zoning district. And all spaces shall be located on the same parcel or building site as the buildings they are required to serve, unless otherwise authorized by a official use permit. Otherwise, regulated by the Optin Housing Diversification Program established by the Portola Valley Housing Element. And the council struck the last sentence of that of that section. So struck the the sentence starting with this requirement does not apply to the RMF23 zoning district.
Thank you.
So there has been a motion and a friendly amendment to include this amended.
Okay, so there's been a motion. Do we need to take do another mode start at the beginning now that we have the friendly amendment? Or we can just.
No, I'm going to accept the friendly amendment.
Okay, go for it.
So friendly amendment accepted. So we need a second.
Okay.
A second.
All right. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Elfs.
Aye.
Councilmember Hufte.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Asco.
Aye.
Mayor Wannecott.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you again to the planning commission and the ASCC and the staff for all the hard work that's gone in to get us to this point. We really appreciate it. We know it's been difficult. And onward.
Thank you very much. This is exciting.
Awesome. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, enjoy your night. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, which is a regular agenda item approved to enter into agreement with Sarah Capital for a high level assessment. So is it Judith and Mary who will be presenting? Thank you.
All right, so I'm not sure how much we really need to present. For the public, this was submitted as a consent agenda item in our last meeting. We were advised that a lot of information could be added to help provide more context. And this is the outcome of that additional effort. There's a couple of things I would note that are in here, but just to in short, the subcommittee identified an opportunity that along the way of our work in trying to understand what are what was before us that may or may not be strictly within our purview. It is within the town manager's signing authority. But nevertheless, we wanted to make sure that we brought this forward. These are important first steps to try and forward our subcommittee report, but also get our bearings in the post-adoption plan space and housing element space. So with that said, we provided more detail around the process and what we're doing within limits of confidentiality. We have set out the opportunity to engage a consultant on a limited basis for an initial framework. It is not a commitment for anything further. And I'm not, I don't want to repeat the whole memo, but happy to answer any questions. And Mary, if you have more to add.
I just want to I just want to just sort of sort of at a broader point of view, point out what we've been doing. Basically, we've been open to residents and property owners to talk about the various different possibilities within the town. And we have accumulated a what we consider a very hopeful list of opportunities that we think are much less impactful on on the character of the town. And so in order to be able to make dreams come true, we feel that we need a little bit more information. And that would come more directly to us in in terms of this this particular, the the different opportunities, the different sort of regional opportunities that are available to to meet our our revenue numbers and our affordable housing numbers. So that's the way I saw it, and I I thought it was a very successful outreach to to the community. And and I felt quite proud of the work we we did. So in that light, I I would we would appreciate, I would appreciate the support of the council that we actually could benefit at this point from this from this having this level of information brought to us.
Jeff or Craig, any questions?
So the proposal talks about six potential mixed income affordable housing sites. Do you know, I mean, do you know which six? Do you have six sites specifically in mind? I mean, I know you can't tell us which one, but just asking, do you actually have sort of a list that you would start with?
No, I we have six types of sites. The wording was very careful. So we would have to, for example, a two acre parcel on flat land with no constraint, no geologic constraints. We would posit some of those. We would derive them from what we're hoping might be made available. But because of confidentiality, because we are looking for, well, how do we think about a smaller site that has potential for fewer units, but maybe a few workers' housing units? How would that map onto what we're trying to achieve here versus the the higher density on a flatter piece of land?
So this is sort of, I mean, initially, I, you know, when thinking about the sunrise, I thought this applied specifically to sort of things that might super make Ford Fields superfluous. But your sounds, it sounds like you're either doing that or thinking of sites that could just generally contribute.
Yes, because I don't know that there's going to be one site. I mean, it's going to obviously be more efficient to have one site with more density. But that may or may not happen, so we did want to play around with what combinations where we would be on the financial spectrum in development opportunities on other types of sites. And I don't know if six is not a magic number. I think it is what they were willing to consider within the scope of the project. It's not like we think there are six in that fit. But but we want to have a small initial assessment study. So we don't want it to be overly comprehensive, diminishing returns at some point. So six is what they offered.
Okay, those are my those are my questions for now.
Yeah, thank you.
So I think my question is why now versus when we, you know, constitute the ad hoc.
Yeah.
Because, you know, if you follow the post-housing element sort of process we laid out, it was you guys were going to come up with this list, then we were going to create the subcommittee, and then we were going to move forward. And some of this feels to me like it belongs in that slot rather than now, so I'm curious.
No, I don't think it's instead of. Let me be clear. I think this is supplemental. I would love for this to be a very logical and linear process. I don't think that's what we're likely to face. But what we're trying to do is get our bearings on information that's going to help us understand, you know, ideally, what what we're dealing with in terms of financial direction on these different types of sites that are available. And in particular, there's a couple of sites where people have actually said, because we had mentioned, okay, we've been advised of this potential instrument being available now. And they're like, oh, well, we find that helpful. Not that they would depend on it, but but they are themselves. You know, maybe they are thinking of purchasing, maybe they have a project, but they haven't really been thinking of it as for the the town's housing element. And so I think people are saying, I could do with that information. Whether I can't tell you is a butt for at all. But to me, and Mary, you should speak to this if you heard it differently. I thought that people were saying this could be useful information in terms of thinking about a framework whereas they, you know, asking anybody to get involved in this type of effort, they're starting from zero and and having some information rather than none was the thought. This is not supposed to be the only thing we do, and it's an initial foray. It's, you know, a limited scope of project. So you could go either way, Craig. You could say we're not going to invest in that until we reach a point in the future. But there was enough interest from enough different areas that Mary and I, or at least I'll speak for myself. I felt that this is worth bringing forward and seeing if this is something we want to consider.
And I would just add to that, Craig, that you your point about agility and about actually being able to get something done is particularly important in this situation. And this prepares us to be able to act when and if we need to. So it to handicap ourselves with lack of information is just going to slow the whole thing down. We're just going to leave too much to speculation to be able to move forward.
Yeah, and and some of the public comments, rightly so, are saying there's other resources and there's other expertise in town, and we're by no means trying to exclude that. I think as the full ad hoc committee process plays out before that, I think it would be incredibly useful to get different information flow going here. But this was something that seemed timely to me, given the the discussions that we have had.
One other question. I in my limited understanding of the finances behind affordable housing, I know that certain tax breaks, significant ones, are very location dependent. Is this analysis going to sort of take that any sort of? Will they will they will there be a geographic component built into this to sort of make sure that, I mean, you know, a two acre site in one part of town might be very, very amenable. As far as a mile away might be might be not might not work because it doesn't is no longer close enough to amenities to shopping and such. That's that's a major consideration for building. I just curious if they have they talked about that? Is that built into this analysis?
The amenities, like I I thought you were starting down the I thought I heard tax at the beginning, so I got very confused.
There's a I happen to know there's a very large federal tax break that is but it's to qualify. You have to be within a certain distance of schools, shopping centers, medical facility, I mean, various public facilities. And some parts of town do qualify for and some parts of town I don't.
Yeah, no, that's a fair point. I I don't know the answer, Craig, but we could ask that.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be part of what.
I don't mean to give.
We would be directing Sharif to.
Yeah.
To ask, right? Our our request is to direct Sharif to engage.
Yeah, got it.
I think one of the things that's hard for me about this is that I don't under. I'd love more understanding of the overall process in terms of what you guys envision. My reading of the what what I had anticipated was that the subcommittee was going to do. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you. I know you guys have done a ton of work. And so I definitely I think everybody appreciates all your hard work. What I'm trying to understand is I thought the scope of the subcommittee was to identify, as you call it scout out, you know, a variety of of possible options in town. I feel like that's the work that you've been working on. And so to me, looking at the financing of it seems maybe a step beyond. Well, I don't want to get into discussion. But what I'm trying to understand is, you know, how does this fit into your overall expectation of what your project is at this point? Like, where does it start? Where are you within it? You know, I, I think per my comments at the last meeting, under, having more understanding of this, the overall work of the subcommittee, the process, where you are in the process, what the timeline is, where you expect it to end. I think that will help me kind of understand this better, if it's in, in more in context of the work that you guys have been doing.
Well, as I said, I think this is borderline not in our scope, and that's why we brought it forward, right? We didn't have to. We could have gone to Sharif, and we did. And we said, Sharif, here's an opportunity. Send your signing authority. It would possibly be helpful, but we all decided it would be best to have a discussion with this council. So I'm not trying to say that this is, our duty is to engage in a financial discussion, but you can't divorce evaluating sites without some information. And it is a nonlinear process. I wish it were linear, and I wish I could say over six months, we're going to do step A, B, and C. But unfortunately, I am hearing things like, oh, I might be interested, but I'd like to see a little more information on how that would work. And so this was just opportunistic to these ones, you know?
And so.
Concrete, you know, we developed a list of 28 sites. And we ran them in our, in our, with our amateur approach. And we felt the need to be able to add a little bit more information onto that, to thicken it up a little. And we felt, felt that these different sites did fall into different types of sites. And, uh, that you would lose if you don't take this opportunity at this point in time to get this kind of information to the, to the people, we're going to lose the opportunity.
Thank you. Um, one, another question I want to ask, um, is with respect to how much information you guys are willing to share at this point, as we saw in a lot of the, um, submissions, there's, there is interest from the public to, um, have more transparency into the set of properties that you guys are looking for. Not disclosing addresses or names of people who don't want to be disclosed at this juncture, but in a more generic sense. And I'm assuming you guys read the pack, like all the, the last minute, um, postings with the requests for that, or I could read through it. Are you up to speed on what was requested? Um, so I'll just represent it, but, um, so there were questions regarding, um, could this process at this juncture include some sort of table or a list of the, you know, if it's 15 or, you know, I don't know if it's 20 or 15 or whatever, pardon me? Okay, the report said 20 and then it said 15. So a list of that, um, uh, referencing the, you know, for each one referencing the neighborhood, um, maybe a range of addresses was suggested potentially instead of an actual address for those that are reluctant. Certainly the acreage, the potential density and the type of category that would, it would fall into. I'm assuming if you're talking to people, you know, if they want to do, you know, a full, very low income project versus a mixed project, which tho- those are hugely impactful in terms of the quantity that all of these would, um, produce. And so I'm curious about the, whether, the type of buildings, so whether it's going to be, um, uh, which category, very low income, low income, mixed use. It, it, you know, it has huge implications to the density on each site. So I guess the question that I'm, with that very long preamble, are you guys willing to, uh, bring forward as a next step? Would you bring forward a list along those lines? And if not, if you could share why? I reckon, again, recognizing that certain property owners don't want their name or address, and I absolutely respect that.
Well, uh, as my particular curiosity of is affordable housing. And whether we can build, uh, workers' housing. And that's been a high priority in my assessment of, of the, of the different, uh, properties. That being said, uh, we have a, a mix of those, and I suppose we could do categories, types. We can't do types as we move forward. I think there, uh, it's, it's sensitive for a number of reasons, uh, because, um, what we've tried to do that hasn't been done before, which is, is engage residents in, who are property owners or, or wannabe property owners who, uh, so that we wouldn't get into the mistake that was done before where we zone people without, and we continue to do, zone people without them knowing about it until after. So these, this was, uh, an effort to understand where there was a possibility of, of an agreement that would meet our, our housing needs. Be they all of the, and all of those are come out of this because we, uh, I think we angled first at affordable work, working, working house, uh, housing. Low and very low to replace Dorothy Ford Park.
So, so again, the question was, if there's a list of 15 to 28, whatever your list is, would you be open, um, to providing that type of information as a first step? That generally characterizes those parcels? Question to both of you.
I would not recommend it. We're having discussions where people, some people are saying, I don't want to talk to you, go away. We're having others that are like, I'm super interested, but I need more information from you. And we're trying to figure out how to get that done. And I understand how this may be frustrating, but as scouts, we're trying to get people to talk to us and assess willingness. We are not into the next steps of, okay, here's the ten, the 10 that are a solution. And I think, um, i- in a small town like ours, it's unrealistic to think that if you disclose neighborhoods, you're not actually disclosing at an uncomfortably close level, who's engaged in the discussion. I'm not comfortable with that.
What if you take away neighborhoods and it's just the size of the lot? And the type of lot it is, like, is it on a slope? Is it flat? And the, you know, the acreage. And you said you ranked them so to understand how many, you know, how, again, so yeah, that's one question. If you're interested, no, that's fine. I'm not trying to push. I'm just trying to get clarity of how you feel about the public feedback. If you disagree with it, that's totally fine. I just want to
I don't think it's wise to do that right now. I would imagine that wrapping up our report, we will have, we'll, we'll have to go to the individuals and say, if you're willing to proceed in the next step of, of making it clear that you're interested, because that, that's my hope. Like, people say, yep, I, I'd be, love to be considered, or I'm comfortable being considered. And then we have the ad hoc committee that's going to take work product and run with it and enhance or do what it will. But that's not my understanding of Mary's and my role, right?
And so then another.
Basically, we're trying to maintain the trust of the residents. Instead of jeopardizing the property owners, we're, we're, we're trying to build trust in the community.
Like I've said a couple of times, I'm not asking to disclose any property owners. So, and, uh, so then another question is, in terms of the process, you mentioned doing this as a first step and then expanding the committee or flipping to an ad hoc committee. You call it an ad hoc committee.
That's the post adoption plan. We've always said, we would get started, there'd be an outreach subcommittee, and then the ad hoc committee. You know, we have to look at our timeline for the post adoption plan, but that's always been what I thought then our work product would feed into.
So what would be, how would you know your, like, what are, what, what's the, what is the outcome that you're looking for that would give you confidence that you're ready to move to that next step? In the process, like, what are you?
I think diminishing returns on additional outreach, which we are probably getting close to, but we're not at, at this point. And then there is always public suggestions that we follow up on, and we are still getting some of those, or at least, Mary, I, I still see a couple here and there. So I think, you know, at some point soon, we will be, be comfortable saying we've done what we can do, but it's not today. And if you want to turn it around and just say, target this calling the process closed by X date, I think that's fine.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand what you're thinking in terms of the process. It wasn't.
Well, I'm asking for your feedback, because it's, it's the council's subcommittee. So if, if we all as a group want to say, here's the timeline for the post adoption plan, and here's when your sub, outreach subcommittee needs to just wrap what it has and give a final report, that's totally fine. That, that might be the way to go.
Yeah, no, and we'll can get into that in discussion. I agree. So another.
I would say for me, the, the Sarah consultant piece would, uh, make it possible for me to feel much more comfortable with coming forward with that kind of information without jeopardizing people's privacy and business.
And so that's, what information are you personally expecting? Like, what are you, what are you expecting? So I'd, I'd love to know a little bit about how Sarah was selected, who else you considered, and what information you're expecting to get from them. Cause I was, it, it mentioned theoretical sites and stuff like that. So it's just a little murky about what the output of the stu- study was, if it's theoretical sites.
This, it would be theoretical sites based on the types of sites that are in town. I don't know how to, I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult here. I don't quite understand what you're looking for.
So they're not actual sites? They're profiles of sites?
We are, if, if people affirmatively say, I would like my site, I'm comfortable with my site being referenced specifically, I'd be more than happy to have that be part of the study. Right now, um, we have maybe one, maybe one of those, and another that's like, no, I'm not comfortable yet, but I want, I want some input. I want some information. I'd like that analysis. So we, we're getting a little bit of both.
And it's not going to be the final solution, whatever. This consultant is not going to be the final solution.
Yeah.
It's, it's more a, uh, a sign of goodwill and good faith that we are actually interested in doing affordable housing.
So can you tell me a little bit about how you guys chose Sarah and what others you looked at, given, given what your goal was?
This was opportunistic, and I asked, um, the town attorney and town manager if we need to go through a process. And it being just an initial study for the amount it was and a prelim to further work. I did not hear a need for a process. Uh, we did check on that. This was a group that's, that was introduced to me by a town resident. I didn't know anything about them before. Once I described what we were trying to do, they were, they were starting to follow a little bit and, and mentioning your expertise. So it was opportunistic. And if we're comfortable with that, that's great. And if we're not comfortable with it, that's fine.
I, I would also add that we have a list of seven different, uh, affordable housing, um, not-for-profits and profits that we've talked to over, over that period of time to try and get a little bit more sophisticated in how actually you do this.
Right.
And, uh, and these people are the most professional by far.
And they were the ones that said, hey, we keep talking about theory. We could do something like a, a feasibility study that might help you flush out some of the questions, some of the, the opportunities in a more concrete fashion. So that's what it is, and.
So one of your comments here said they don't typically perform this type of study, but they're willing to do it.
Right.
Which makes me think this isn't, I mean, their core competency is more in the financing. And I'm wondering if, given that, um, and, you know, there, there were, one of the things I think that there was community feedback on, and even feedback within uh, some members of the ASCC and Planning Commission, is that starting with a consulting, uh, group such as happened with Lisa Wise versus starting with people that really know our community and know the neighborhoods and know the political dynamics, um, starting with the experts that we have in town first, might be, you know, to learn from that process, a good first step, and then moving on to, um, an outside consulting book group to take it to the next level. I'm curious what your feedback around that approach would be.
Were the ASCC comments as a group, uh, speaking on behalf of the ASCC?
No, I said some members.
So they were speaking as individual residents in town?
I heard the comments during meetings, while they were on the panel, so I don't know the distinction.
While they were on the panel for an ASCC meeting or for our meeting?
ASCC meeting.
But.
What?
There hasn't been one.
What's the concern? It, not as a body, I'm not saying as a body. I'm saying there has been feedback in the community, including during ASCC meetings, about we could have started with our community experts as a first step, and we might have had a cleaner process. I heard that.
But there has been no ASC, the reason I'm confused is there had not been an ASCC meeting since we submitted this proposal, so I don't know.
I'm talking about during the zoning process. Sorry, that's what I said. I said if we could learn from some of what were considered hiccups during the Lisa Wise consulting engagement.
Yeah, and I have no problem with there being an accessing of, of local expertise and experience. That's what I said at the beginning. This was opportunistic, and these people are, are committing to a timeline and a type of work product that is not otherwise available. It's a tool among many that this town might want to use.
I think I'll stop right now. Any other questions at this juncture, before we go to public comment?
I mean, I have other questions, but there are more discussion questions.
Okay. I don't see any hands raised. Um, in the schoolhouse, there's one hand, two hands now raised on Zoom. Um, the first is David Cardinal.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Um, I think I really love the fact that we're identifying some sites, or I hope we are. I do have three sort of quick comments. First of all, I believe most of the, uh, town council was elected on transparency. And I get that people want to keep their names out of the public or something, but, you know, I think we have to report out on where we are. Uh, it's been six months. I think it'd be great to get, as others have said, kind of a table of here's the possibilities, um, here's what's, and to be honest, from what I can tell, speaking of, um, helping out the public, the comments on this subject are pretty universal on that from our actual residential public. So that's a thing, and I think it's hopefully pretty important. Second, I, I keep hearing it's okay to, we should talk to volunteers. But I don't think the subcommittee has actually talked to any of them. Honestly, we have sketches all over the map, and Lisa Wise Consulting has done, or Carter War has done possible sketches for 4370, 4394, Lederer Church, Stan- Stanford. I mean, we, Carter's done stuff at the town, for the town center. We have tons and tons of sketches and ideas, and we have at least two architects, volunteer Gina Dixon and Carter War, uh, and a ton of finance people. I mean, this credit tenant leases so that people like Disney can get a cheaper interest rate than their landlords. But between Jim White and George Savage and his people, we know way more than a random, you know, venture finance firm is going to know about our housing situation. We've got life moves executives. So I, I just don't see why we need to spend a lot of money. And finally, I guess this is kind of the scary part. Do we have any sites after six months where the owner is actually willing to say this is a site? If after six months, we're still fishing, um, and hoping for the best, I'm guessing a couple of financial analyses, and God bless, I, I'm not saying we should stop, but I don't, I, I think we need to take a step back and go, it's not working that way. We need to, we need to come up with a different plan for how we're going to fund this stuff. So thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Um, next up is Rita Comas.
Yes, as I mentioned last week, you know, it, it didn't move forward last week, but I really appreciate the hard work that went into this, looking into this and actually putting together a proposal to bring to the community. As I mentioned in the oral statements, you know, there's a couple to bring to the community. As I mentioned in the oral statements, you know, there's a couple other people in planning. And we have not seen those contracts, and maybe we're just not privy. But I do appreciate the work that's been put in, how they're keeping people's privacy. Before, when people's addresses were just shown up on a document for planning, for the ad hoc housing committee. You know, that was, that was, that was a huge hit for, for many people in the community, not just for the people whose address were on those lists, but for the people that care about this community. It's like, well, what are we doing to ourselves? What are we doing to each other? So I really appreciate that for years, we've been talking about all these different sites. And this proposal is actually saying, hey, let's bring in some experts to look at these sites and say, this, this park won't work. These three acres out of this, only one and a half will work. We need that information. And yes, we have expertise in town, expertise in our town has been putting up their hands for quite a while, and no one's allowing them to move forward. It seems that the only way we can move forward is by paying some, an outside person to do it. And hopefully we use those studies. So I completely applaud Mary and Judith in trying to move this forward. And it's going to move forward in some capacity. I just would like to see the community get behind it. Because what, what are we going to build? And where are we going to put this stuff? On, in a canyon, a fire canyon? No, we need to know that information before we then send it on to HCD or even try to start building on it. So thank you.
Next up is Cece.
Yeah, so this is Jay Jernik. Cece is my wife, Claire. And thank you again for allowing me to talk. I would just want to make sure that this is not a ploy to not develop Dorothy Ford Park that, as has already been, I believe, decided that that was going to be done, that this is not instead of, and this is not a, that hopefully the transparency is that this is not instead of, that there is not other agenda involved in this, that this is to actually, in addition to, be able to develop other plots. I don't think it's any, probably any surprise that it's going to be along the corridors, along Portola Road or Alpine Road is my guess, but it could be other things. And I do think it's a good idea, I guess, to look at these things. But again, I just want to make sure that, that there is and continues to be transparency, that it's not in lieu of. Thank you.
Whoops. Thank you. I don't see any more hands raised. Zoom, so, and none in the schoolhouse. So I will close public comment and bring it back to the council. Whoop, actually, there's one hand up here. Ann Koffsel.
Hi there. Thanks. I didn't do my raise hand correctly. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. I have two things. One, I'm disappointed that this is not six actual sites. I understood that in one of the earlier memos. But, okay, it's generic sites. I really think if it's generic sites, we should, you should be able to name what those six sites are, like the one example Judith gave, the two acres flat lots. Give us all those. I don't see what the secrecy is on that. And two, I'm just having trouble envisioning what these homeowners are thinking or what information they're going to get. I really need examples to work from. And let me just throw out, because I'm just so clueless about what people are thinking. Are these land, property owners that are being so generous, they're thinking of donating their land for some housing? And they want to be assured by these consultants that the money can work out and that there will be a way to finance it before they do that donation? Or are they actually thinking they might tear down their own house and then build for market units and build for lower income? And they want to know what the total cost would be, and they might fund it themselves? What exactly info are the property owners going to get that make them decide one thing or another? I'm just, can't picture it. So that would really help me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Next up is Rebecca. I'm assuming it's Rebecca Flynn.
Hi, Rebecca Flynn. I'm a little concerned that it sounds like to me that a number of the town council members have not actually read all the comments that came in today and that were submitted this morning or yesterday. Because it seems like people are kind of uninformed about the number of people who are against this proposal and who have proposed instead that we first start out with using the resources we have in town. I mean, the reality is that the normal step that a homeowner would go or a property owner would go when they're thinking about developing their property is they would phone up the planning department and ask for help on what they're allowed to do and what the restrictions are with respect to their project, with respect to their property. So it's unclear to me why all of a sudden we're going to be asking a group out of Texas to give us that advice about what they can do on their property when we have that expertise right in the planning department. And they've already committed to actually providing that service to people who are interested in building affordable housing. And then my second point is, again, we're talking about private property owners who are considering building mixed affordable housing, which means a combination of market rate homes as well as affordable homes in the context of most likely trying to at least make a profit off of this. So it's unclear to me why the town should be, the town taxpayers should be, should be paying for that. And then finally, we're talking now, now my understanding is that we're just talking about made up hypothetical sites. We're not even kind of trying to rank those six sites to some of the discussions of the sites that you've spoken to. So now it's a totally hypothetical thing. And if that's the case, why are you not coming to the ASCC and asking our team to play around with these hypothetical sites about how we could fit, you know, whatever number of units that might work on that thing first, before we start talking to this group out of Texas that doesn't seem to have a lot of relevant, you know, relevant expertise for what we need them to do. So, you know, it seems like you're going about this process in the wrong order. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you, Rebecca. I do not see any additional hands raised on Zoom. I'm going to close oral communications and bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to go first?
I just want to clarify, I have read every single piece of the public comments.
I have also read every piece of the public comments.
Ditto. Me too.
So who would like to start?
I will start. I mean, this whole, this whole discussion, I think, is about process. And I, it's inherently a very messy process, and it's not linear. And, you know, it's, it's, no, you can't, people are coming to these, people are subcommittee in confidence and having a private conversation, and we can't be, you know, we can't be putting their names or even risking, you know, because people are very sensitive to that sort of thing. So I understand, you know, it's frustrating, but I understand that we can't disclose the names. I guess that said, I'm still, I guess, I'd like to come away from this discussion with sort of a, just a better sense of process that we all agree on. And I'm not saying, at this point, I'm not saying yes or no to this. I'm just saying that it does seem a little out of place in the process, but I don't want to decide that for sure until we, if that's the case, then I want to help define a process where it makes sense at some point, if not now, later. So, you know, I guess my next would be, what, what other steps can we take? You know, we, I, in speaking with staff about this, I, you know, this, this analysis is beyond the scope of what our, our planning department can do right now. So it's not, it would be, we can't ask, we can get some, I think we get some feedback and some evaluation from our planning staff, but not the depth or breadth of this, this analysis. So there's a place for this somewhere on the road. I'm just not sure when. I guess my question would be, you know, I, I'm, I, I'd like to hear a little more about the RFP versus no RFP, just because it is, I mean, this is something I feel like should, should probably be, RFP feels appropriate for me for this, but I'd be happy to hear the arguments either way on that. You know, we have sites that people are expressed an interest. We'd like to start, you know, maybe we can rule some of them out with some short-term analysis. Are there other ways to get there besides, you know, before we get to this point? And could we hold off on this until we have really, I mean, can we go back to them at some point with sites that we are, people that are committed to this? And so we know, you know, supposed to six generic sites, we have three, four, or five, or six, or maybe even eight or nine real sites that we, you know, confidentially could, could get treated. These are just questions that I'm asking right now, and I want to hear people's thoughts on them. But again, thank you for doing this. I mean, I appreciate it. I don't mean to, I certainly don't mean to demean the effort. I just want to have a full discussion, make sure I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you, Jeff. Craig?
I think my thoughts pretty well align, actually, with Jeff's. I totally appreciate the work you put in those. I know how hard it is to get this stuff. It does feel premature to me right now. And sort of thinking about the process part of it, I, I do think we need to sort of think about what the timeline is. And Judith, I know, you know, we worked through the post housing element process. I mean, we sort of had one, then everything kept shifting, so it kept changing. But for me to be comfortable going forward, just, I need to understand, like, when do we think we're going to move to the ad hoc committee? I mean, it doesn't have to be to the day, but, you know, is it two months from now or is it eight months from now? And, well, it's not now. I mean, well, okay, if you're proposing now, then that's fine, but I didn't think we were. And, you know, I would say we need to back off. I mean, we know our goal, and unlike the one public comment, which was this sort of in place of, I mean, this, that is the whole point of this, is to try to potentially find a replacement for Ford Field. So if anybody thinks that this is not that, then that's wrong. This is exactly that. It's looking to fulfill the sunset or sunrise requirement. Yeah, so that's, that is the, you know, that's what they were charged to do. So just to be super clear. So I think I'd like to see us come up with that timeline. We know that, what do we have, like, third quarter of 2025, where we'd have to do an RFP on Ford Field? So we can sort of back off. I mean, we, we know, we've got a hard deadline out there. We can sort of come back to some point where it's like, look, I mean, we just got to deal with what we got and move forward. So I'd like to understand what that date is. The other thing is, I do think we have a lot of expertise in the town. And I appreciate this probably not as, potentially as detailed as the consultants or a consultant, whether, you know, to Jess's point, whether it's an RFP and we get these guys or somebody else. But there are a bunch of people who know how to do affordable housing, and we know those people, and they're willing to talk to us. And at least at the first order, I think we could get some information that might filter out some of these people. Because some of the people might go, oh, well, if it's that much, it's too much, or, okay, I'm still in the ballpark. And then going to something like this, where like, okay, people understand that there's a range, and now we're trying to narrow the range to sort of make it more accurate. So I think that's when I would be comfortable. So I think, much like Jeff, I wouldn't say never to this proposal, but I don't think I'm ready to approve it tonight.
I agree. I also think it's about the process. I agree pretty much with a lot of what you guys said. I do think we have opportunity to leverage volunteers. We heard for the last six months how we should be using our volunteers more. And I think this is a perfect opportunity to do that, particularly given that these are theoretical, more generic profiles versus actual sites. I think, as your memo was written, you were talking about needing a framework. I definitely think our town volunteers, whether it be on the ASCC or the PC, could help with creating that framework. I don't think we need a third party to do that. The one thing, I do think the community does want more transparency. I appreciate that's tricky. So if it can't be a neighborhood, I do think a list, because it's not even clear if it's 12 or 15 or 28 or 20, I've heard different numbers. And so if you guys do have a list, I'd love to see, you know, something that says the size of a lot and what their intention is. I mean, if, to Craig's point, this is to create, replace Ford Field, that these are all small property owners. I'm confused as to, are they donating the land? You know, if it's really to produce 50 very low-income units, that's going to take a lot of people willing to produce their land, you know, with no positive ROI. So I just, I think I, I'm confused by that. And I think getting to more information will help me understand that better. Because if it is a mix affordability, as has been said, we're going to need that many more lots available to make up for Dorothy Ford Field. A question, a thought I have for you guys is, if you would, because it is a ton of work, is, if, is there an approach that you, if you're hearing that people are feeling like this is a little bit of out of order in terms of next steps, and you're willing to revisit what that next step could be, you know, would you be interested at this juncture in expanding your subcommittee to maybe include somebody from the Planning Commission and, or, you know, somebody from the ASCC? If town staff doesn't have a ton of time to put towards that, we could at least move the meter further using our experts and community members in town that know a lot about this. There also, once we know a lot, I mean, there's absolute back-of-the-envelope math you can do based on the buildable space and what we know it costs, you know, $800,000 per unit for very low income. So in other words, I'm agreeing that we can get much further along before we would work with a third party. When we go and work with a third party, I do have questions about whether this is putting a circle in a square. And, so I would save that for later, but I'm just kind of confused about the fit of this company to do this type of work. So the other thing I just wanted to highlight is, back, we have talked about the post-affordable process in March, and September, and April. And in March and September, twice, I had suggested that finding the lots is one thing, and that's very, very hard. Finding the way to get actual, you know, production of units, especially very low income, is the hard part. And we don't know how to do that in our town. We haven't done that. And what I had suggested at that time is that we should, we should create an affordable housing best practices panel so we could learn about the approaches to getting affordable housing. I mean, that was over a year ago at this point. And so the need to understand this more, I absolutely agree with, and I've been saying that for over a year. So I think it's an important need. I just don't agree with this approach. And I don't, I'm not supportive of this sequence of events. I would flip it. So that's kind of where I am.
Do you have a comment?
No, go ahead.
Right. Couple of things. I think scope creep has occurred in this discussion, and it's reflecting the fact that we have to return to our post-adoption plan. There is a timeline. It's not accurate, but we have to bring that forward. We simply haven't been able to, given the HCD certification, decertification, and zoning. So if people are saying it's been six months, it's been six months where Mary and I and everybody here had been dedicating enormous amounts of time and energy in trying to solve the emergency in front of us. So let's back off of the six-month references here. It hasn't been a full six months. It's been what we could do with the time that's available after the fire in front of us. But it is a valid point that we have a post-adoption plan. We should revisit what that is and how we want it to work. And like, we have it there, but if we want to get into the timelines, let's bring that forward and have that noticed discussion. Instead of this unnoticed scope creep about timing, let's do that. I'm fine with that. I think it's a productive thing. I want your input. That's why we brought this forward. It is great to see how many people engage. I mean, if I ever want to get people to engage, I'm going to start proposing engaging a consultant. I'm actually pleased with that, and I thank people for their engagement. I will caution you, thinking about optimizing too much is going to kill the process. And it doesn't mean that people will just not want to talk to us. It's a combination of people won't want to talk to us if they don't trust us. People will get disinterested. We will have some opportunities that come up, and properties do sell in town. And when we don't expect them to- and when we don't expect them to, and being nimble is important. So over optimizing the process is a great thing we all feel proud of, but I actually think it's the, you know, the enemy of good is the perfect. So we should all like try and think of what it is that's the most productive use. And I, I'm fine with the process not working to get into this right now. But I do want people to understand the enormous impediments that we've had getting started, continuing our focus, producing work product. And yeah, all good questions, people, and I have them too. Just in case you think I don't, I share every single concern that you've got. It's just I'm trying to do something, and I think doing something is way more important than doing something theoretically perfectly. So, so that's a perspective. I welcome any process you guys want to follow, and I will be on board and supportive of it.
Now, I wanted to respond to some of the questions because, first of all, yes, this is in lieu of Dorothy Ford Park, of course. And yes, we do need a different financial approach, which is one of the questions, one of the comments that was made. And this is that. And yes, we do want affordable housing. We want not necessarily mixed use. We want real affordable housing and possible multifamily housing to meet the 50 units. And would it require two or three lots? It probably would. And have we missed opportunities already? Yes, we have. There have been several lots that have come on that I have brought to the town planner, the town manager that I have tried, that I have been told it would take six months to get onto the council agenda, that it was not possible to, to even discuss it for various different reasons, because there was other things we had to talk about. And those get sold, those people disappear. So those opportunities are leaving us. We're not talking about the Alpine scenic corridor. We're not talking about the Portola Valley, the Portola Road scenic corridor. We're talking about places that are tucked away that would actually enhance our community, not denigrate our community like we're currently planning with our current housing element. I think I got all the questions that I got out of that. This is a different financial approach. It isn't in lieu thing. It isn't the answer, the be all and end all. And we have people currently who are interested, who would be more interested if we got them a little bit more showed them that we actually did care about affordable housing.
So does anybody have a suggestion for process? I have a thought, but I'd rather, you know, have somebody else go.
Yeah, I have at least one.
Please.
So, I mean, Judith and I worked on the post-housing adoption plan. I think we should go back. And given we've now just, we hopefully, you know, passed the zoning stuff, so hopefully that's going through in consent. So at this point, I think it's perfectly legitimate for us to go back and say, let's figure out that timeline and talk about that process. And I think we can also, like, I don't need to get involved in the actual properties. That's not my part. That's between you guys. But the process part, I think that's part of the post-housing element, and I think you and I could do that again.
Yeah.
So my suggestion would be that, you know, we meet sort of ASAP, and probably not next meeting, but maybe the meeting after. Do you, does that you feel comfortable?
Absolutely.
That we could come back with a proposed timeline and process? And then we could have that as an agendized discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I want to be constructive. If we're going to say no, I want to say no in a constructive way. So, so that makes a lot of sense to me. I guess my other question, and well, my question is, who, I mean, who else can we involve in this? Because I, I think, I mean, I haven't talked to either of you, obviously, about what you're doing, but I assume that you've talked to town planning staff. As these properties have come in, you sort of run them at least by someone in planning when they've been available.
We've tried.
Yeah, no, I understand. And I completely understand that the planning has been in flux for several months, and it's been part, yeah, no, I get it. Okay, so there's, I mean, there's just the sort of the very quick and dirty analysis from our own planning staff, just making sure you're not chasing something. There are local volunteers. I don't, you know, it's always kind of tricky to bring sort of private residents into a process like this when privacy is a concern. So I don't know if that's even, again, I'm just, there's suggestions that have been made. I wanted to say which of them are worth exploring and which of them aren't. I guess, what other resources could we bring in kind of, you know?
What about commissioners? Do you consider that private residence?
This is an ad hoc committee of the town council. I'm not comfortable. I'm personally not comfortable. If we want to switch the process up, that's fine. We can talk about that.
You mean, are you saying bringing the commissioners in as part of the committee? Or just talk to them? I mean, just?
Well, talking's always fine.
Right.
I figure just it's theoretical.
One of the people that we haven't talked to that were mentioned so far.
But specific, like you've taken these sites, I mean, you've just, you've gotten feedback on specific sites from them? I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out what other steps we could take before this step that might be helpful.
I have, that's true. Those things that we have gotten specific insights from, that they've offered.
Okay.
A question I have to your point to process of elimination, private community members aren't a fit. Who can work with? Staff is overwhelmed. Could commissioners help with helping develop the framework? I'm not talking about the whole, I'm talking about expanding your, your subcommittee or however we want to frame it. That helping refine what the framework is going to be. And then also being able to, to assess, do the back of the envelope math with you based on their experience of the acreage, the buildable space, the types of development that would go there. That kind of, you know, so we could at least get this a little bit further along. Right now, it's.
Right, so let us go and work in the process.
I hear you. I hear their quest, both of you. I've got some ideas, I think, and I'm sure you do too. So let us come back in two meetings.
Okay.
And have that discussion and process, and we'll try to include it. And then as part of that discussion, I think we can then go and say, okay, look, there are other things we need to deal with, but let's focus it within that process discussion.
Sure, sure. I think the only point I'm making is in some, like, I'd hope that you guys wouldn't consider as part of that engaging the volunteers that we have that have said they want to help.
Can I just spring up the question of an RFP for this versus this? I just want, I'm just curious.
Sure. I don't, I reported what I know.
Yes.
So ask away.
Catherine or Sharif, do you have, I mean, just thoughts about that? Should, would you recommend an RFP for something of this nature or?
Yeah, Sharif, my recollection with this was a pretty one-off type of thing. It's not like a standard process. And Sarah itself was just trying to be creative, but wasn't aware that others were, were doing less. So there was some concern, if I recall our discussion, and please correct me, that there was, you know, it would be difficult to do an RFP. It might actually cost significant process time, et cetera. But those were like the takeaway that I recall, but feel free to.
That's my understanding as well, Vice Mayor. Also, there's argument to be made whether an RP would be fruitful in this endeavor. And also, there's also argument, if it could be made, if this is a sole source, if Sarah is the one that could be doing this, that others can't. And if that is made available, then you can obviously rule that as well, so.
I mean, to be clear, I wasn't thinking it was a likely candidate for that. I have no problem with opening up and analyzing a process.
Yeah.
Over time, I also support Sarah's idea of a day where, where experts come in and if the community is interested, gets educated at the next level of different vehicles, that's just way like farther down the line. And, you know, if he, I, there's not many of the people I've been speaking with, Mary, that know enough about development of affordable housing to know, oh, I, I want to sell the land or I want to lease the land. A few have mentioned different vehicles, but that's a pretty sophisticated thing for a homeowner or a personal owner to.
And I just have.
Opinion on.
And I know nothing about the landscape out there. I don't know what other companies besides Sarah are out there.
Yeah, 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 no, it's a fair point, fair point.
I'm thinking of people like the nonprofit developers. Like, we years ago talked to the former Palo Alto Housing Corporation, whatever they're called.
Alto Housing.
Alto. Did you? Okay, okay. I'm just wondering how helpful they are. Okay, okay. Great, great.
But for what it's worth, it's just, this is a different, this is a more likely to succeed mechanism than, than we've been offered by anybody.
Which, the seed?
The leasing.
Okay. Which I don't really fully understand at this point, so.
Yeah, and that's the reason to do it.
Yeah.
The community does not have the sophistication to evaluate it. And
Fair enough.
And I don't think the people that have been offering have the sophistication to evaluate it.
So I have a couple of mixed in that. I have a couple of odds and ends here. Number one, I actually think the best practices type of panel is something we would definitely benefit right now because basically we're all grappling around in the dark. And I would, I would definitely, you know, think that would be really helpful to move up earlier, to educate all of us. So that's just, to me, deferring that. We were kind of getting 18 months away from when we need to have an RFP for Ford Field. So the other thing that, and I don't know this will be relevant anymore, but I just want to point out that in looking at the Sarah analysis, when it got to step two, it was really focusing on one property. And I guess, as you guys are thinking about this, if there's going to be another one of these going forward, I would assume if there's going to be money spent on one property, we'd want to assure that that one property was something that was going to be significantly fruitful in terms of Ford Field versus something smaller. So just my two cents on that. And then in terms of scope creep, and this is just a question, this item is agendized just as the Sarah report. So I guess I'll hold my questions that are related to the subcommittee until that part of the agenda. I'm confused on the completion of the two.
Well, they are conflated. We can't get a perfect, I mean.
Yeah, so do you mind if I make a comment on that now? Or would you put like?
I have no strong preference. My scope creep comment was, we're starting to implicate the post-adoption plan processes. That's where I was coming from, which is, yeah, we're all getting frustrated on timing, but we have already means for that. That wasn't Mary's in my purview of getting that honed. If you all want to set times and give us targets to wrap up, totally fine. But that wasn't what we were trying to do, Mary and me.
Yeah, so you guys will, I think we're all agreed that you guys are going to go and work and refine what that process is going to be. I think, yes, yeah. I think, you know, I just wanted to make a comment that you said you weren't allowed to talk about it. I've been asking for updates from the outreach subcommittee many times. So I just wanted to, I don't know where that comes at. You thought you weren't allowed to share the information.
Well, as far as that, that fish that got away, the fish that got away might even have been before you. It's been a while, and I didn't bring it to you.
Okay.
I brought it to the manager and the planning commission. I mean, the planner, he was not this.
Okay, all right.
I don't think it was directed, it was not, the comment was not directed towards you.
All right. All right, guys. So do we have our marching march? Like, do you feel like?
Well, there's, there's a big problem, which is, again, that the fish keep running away and that we don't have any, we don't have any action, action to make the fish from going upstream, out into the ocean.
Where are we going with this analogy?
What, what, what do you want to do? What, are you asking?
Well, I'm asking, what are we going to do for? What are we supposed to take to property owners after this?
Well, we're not going to have Sarah.
Okay.
We don't have Sarah. Okay? So we.
We don't know anything about it.
Okay.
We have a.
So they'll have to make decisions on whether to continue to participate without that information. That's bottom line.
They're going to think you don't have the votes to make it, to make action happen.
Well, we don't, so.
Which we don't.
People think that.
But you don't have, let's be careful. You don't have the votes to fund Sarah today. But what we said was, we're going to think about the process, get our timeline in place. And there may be other ways to get these owners some financial information that they need, at least attentive. Because as I see the Sarah thing, I mean, I, I find it really confusing that they're doing site visits, but these are virtual sites. So I just, there's something here that it just doesn't all add up, and it's okay. Like, tonight, it doesn't have to add up.
Right.
But I think, I understand the requirement here for the process. And what you guys need is you have a list of sites, and we need a process that's going to start getting information to site owners. So I get that. So we need to come up with a process. I'm also hearing this notion of best practices, so everybody understands that. And that's actually something that's in the post-housing adoption. I mean, there's a place in there where we talk about public outreach for exactly that. So I think that we need to be clear when that's going to happen. So I think we can capture this. I mean, this has been a super useful discussion, because I think we're getting at the things that we need to. And then I think we do have some people, particularly if it's theoretical sites, we do have some people that, you know, that are financial people, can do a reasonable analysis. They're not going to do a perfect low-income housing analysis, but they can do a reasonable one to give people some sense. And, you know, if there's leasing and some of this other stuff, I mean, maybe we sick them to talk to Sarah and say, you know, explain to us what your product is, and they can bring that back. So I mean, I think we can start this process, maybe not fully complete it to the level of the Sarah. But I think there's, there's do nothing, and there's do Sarah. And I think, all I'm saying is, there's stuff in between that we can get done.
Steps along the way.
Yeah. And then if we get partway along, and then we go, you know, absolutely, Sarah's, we're ready to do the rest of the way, and Sarah's the way to get the rest of it, I'd be okay with that. I'm just, tonight, I'm not ready to do that.
Yeah, okay. I hear it all. I respect all of that. I do think the reason I brought it forward was potential property owners took some energy from being asked if they would be willing to have their type of property assessed. That's important. It would be roughly 60 days. I mean, it's going to be summer, and nothing happens formally in this town. So we're now talking fall. We don't know where we are in the zoning. So honestly, my pragmatism about this isn't that much money. I mean, we've spent a lot of time talking about $25,000. And we all know we're blowing through all kinds of orders of magnitude on top of that on a daily basis here. So, so I'm fine with we're coming out. To be clear, I think this is the constructive framework. But I do urge you all to recognize a lot of best practice net steps is going to result in delay. And that's fine, if that's what we all need. But you do have those choices, and choosing, you know, to do a very linear, very thoughtful process, you know, there's going to be a cost to it. And we, all I'm asking is that you keep that in mind, and it might be the right outcome. But that's, so people understand my driver. That was why I brought this forward without perfect information.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I'm, I'm actually not concerned, like, it's not the $25,000. It was, is that the right, is that the right next step right now? And that's what I was questioning. And you guys are going to work on what that right next step is. I'm hopeful that with some resources by expanding the group, that we can get much further along. And I guess I'm confused by why fish would be swimming away when it was just theoretical information anyhow. I'm hopeful if it was all based on generic profiles, that we can, we can get a very solid first pass at that. That would be my hope.
So it's not about. The way was to give you honest feedback with an honest, actual reaction from a promising opportunity. So that's what that was. I can't say more than that, and it's fine that we were coming out in a different direction. But it was with basis of an actual interaction and a reaction that I was like, oh, this might actually help somebody get comfortable. I mean.
We have not over.
I mean, I'm not trying to convince you otherwise.
Trustworthiness to developers.
Right. Anything else? I feel like we're going a little bit in circles at this point. So. Yeah. Okay. All right. I will close that agenda item and move on to council subcommittee liaison committee and regional agency reports. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to report on that's not in the packet?
Well, I have conservation. Can I just say that, that I think everybody is aware that the IT situation is, is, is abysmal. Yet again, the conservation committee was not able to record their meeting. They couldn't get the machine to, to work. Kim, our, our fire marshal was very disappointed if she wouldn't be able to look at the recording. And we don't, we'd lose the expertise of our conservation community for getting a reasonable fire resilience program in place. So that's, there were one concern that occupied the first 45 minutes of the meeting. And the second 45 minute was consumed by the budget issue of how are we going to have adequate money to maintain our open spaces? And I, of course, continue to be concerned with the budget situation and, and particularly for both open space and, and conservation.
Anything from you, Jeff?
Quick update. The evacuation plan was supposed to be on tonight's agenda. It's been moved to the 12th. I believe, I believe the fire marshal was not available. Is that? But it should be coming back to us the 12th for our consideration.
Thank you. Craig? All right. That closes that agenda, meeting, agenda item, and I will say meeting is adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you very much.